Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Injustice.
Tea and justice.
All.
We'll call the members of the city council, Councilor Gino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Gu拉斯so.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Yeah.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Yeah.
Here, Councilor Nowaselski.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Tondo.
I hope.
Here, Councilor Sereno.
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti.
Yeah.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Yeah.
Here, and Council President Keith.
Here.
Here, forum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of November ninth, two thousand and twenty.
So move.
Calendar item number three, a certificate of commendation will be presented to State Representative Rosalie Vincent on the occasion of her retirement for the Massachusetts General Court.
Madam Clerk, and Madam Representative, I know there's gonna be quite a lot of people that wish to speak tonight, and that's obviously a testament to your work that you've done. What I'd ask is that everyone in attendance, if you wish to speak, if you can use the raise hand function or somehow signal me, and I'll grant you the time to speak. And with the heavy agenda tonight, for people that are not on, Madam Clerk will be moving you on and off when your time is to come up tonight, so just be aware that if you're not on the screen or if you're not a panelist, the clerk will promote you to a panelist when your agenda item comes up. With that being said, this motion was presented by Council Sereno. So Council Sereno, if you wish to read the citation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So I actually don't have the citation in front of me because I actually brought it to Rep. Vincent on Friday evening when I got my council packet. But if you wouldn't mind, I would like to make a somewhat brief presentation. I know we have a long agenda, but given COVID nineteen, we're not going to be able to properly honor Rep. Vincent as she retires, so if I may, I would like to say a few words.
Absolutely.
And just to point out, Rep. Vincent taught me a lot over the years, but brevity in writing was not one of them, so I will try to go as fast as I can. But Rosalie Vincent was sworn in to the Massachusetts House of Representatives on April sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, to represent the communities of Revere, Chelsea, and Saugus. She is currently the Vice Chair of the House Bonding Committee, and in the past, she served as the Vice Chair of the Joint Committee on the Environment, Natural Resources, and Agriculture. Additionally, Rep. Vincent wears the hat of House Chair of the Metropolitan Beaches Commission. Before her election to the House, Rosalie worked on Beacon Hill for twenty-five years as the legislative aide, and then the Chief of Staff to her two immediate predecessors. She is a proud, lifelong, fourth-generation Revere resident, and she is married for fifty-three years to her high school sweetheart, Richie, who is on Zoom with her right now. She's also the loving mother of two daughters, Wendy and Robin, and of all the titles that she has, the one that she takes the most pride in is Mimi to her five talented and beloved grandchildren, Hallie, Max, Ben, Sam, and Zachary. For nearly fifty years, fifty years, Rosalie has selflessly served to improve Revere and has treated our residents with a genuine compassion. Throughout her daughter's childhoods, she was very involved in the PTA and Revere Public Schools as a member and eventual president, where she pioneered women's athletics, creating opportunities for female athletes that never previously existed in the city. She was also a bluebird mom who led Wendy, Robin, and their friends through Girl Scouts. As the girls got older, Rosalie volunteered her time to the community in other ways. She was a founding board member of Revere TV, as well as a part of the charrette that gave way to the Revere Beach Partnership. Along with Rose Napolitano and Rose's Girls, she was an active member of Revere First. Before becoming our state rep, she was also a member of the Revere Beautification Committee. Her work in the community as a private citizen led to her being named a two thousand and twelve unsung heroine by the Mass Commission on the Status of Women. Anyone who knows Rep. Vincent knows that her passion lies within her advocacy for America's first public beach. Prior to being named a Commissioner on the Metropolitan Beaches Commission upon her election in two thousand and fourteen, Rosalie had worked closely with the commission since its inception in two thousand and seven to restore and preserve greater Boston's urban beaches, including Revere Beach. Rep. Vincent is also a staunch environmental advocate and is a founding member of the Alliance for Health and Environment, a coalition of local officials and respected regional environmental groups focused on raising awareness about the public health and environmental impacts of waste incineration and ash disposal. She has been tenacious in her quest to advocate for a closure plan for the Saugus incinerator and ash landfill. Bear in mind that when she took office, there had been no real organized effort in opposition to the Saugus facility in recent memory. There really was no group or elected official that was sounding the alarm on the issue. The first time she ran for office in two thousand and fourteen, a common theme among concerns of people living in the Riverside, the Point of Pines, and in East Saugus was the public health and environmental hazards that came with hosting a trash incinerator in their backyard. It became clear that a voice was needed in this fight. As she reflects on her time in office, she's most proud of the strides that have been made in fighting wheel-brader Saugus. During her tenure, for the first time in many years, the Mass DEP held public hearings and sought public input when it came to actions pertaining to wheel-brader. Although there's still a lot of work to be done, because of her efforts, we have moved the needle on this issue, and don't let the naysayers say otherwise, because the alternative would have been nothing if not for the ferocity of Rep. Vincent's commitment to fighting the wheel-brader issue would not have become as mainstream as it is today. It is why both Clean Water Action and the Saugus River Watershed Council honored her through the years for her resolute commitment to the issue. Legislatively, with the support of Speaker DeLeo, Rep. Vincent has championed Capic's Emergency Services Program, securing in the state budget funds every year that help many needy families in Revere and Chelsea. She has been an advocate on Beacon Hill for our seniors, our veterans, and for the blue-collar men and women, blue-collar working men and women of the Sixteenth Suffolk District who are just trying to make ends meet. This summer, when the House passed landmark legislation to combat climate change, her name was attached to the provision which would codify the concept of environmental justice into our general laws. If enacted before the end of the session, the language will provide stronger protections from pollution and a greater public process for communities like Revere, Chelsea, and Saugus that are overburdened by polluters. On a personal note, I would be remiss if I did not express my gratitude and appreciation to a mentor. Rosalie has taught me the importance of fighting for what you believe in and for standing up for what's right, even in the face of criticism or political backlash. She has taught me that elected officials should always follow their heart and their conscience, and that integrity matters. She has taught me that the word politician is a dirty word. We are not politicians. We are public servants, and we're here to make people's lives better. I will always cherish my time on Team Vincent. As she winds down her time in public life, she has assured me multiple times that she's not going anywhere when it comes to issues that she's passionate about. With the advent of Zoom, I say to my colleagues, don't be surprised if she attends a council meeting while on vacation in Marco Island next winter if wheel-brader is on the agenda. Rep. Vincent, wish you the very best for long and healthy retirement. You've earned it, and you deserve it, truly. Your mother taught you that if you're going to dance, you dance. And for almost fifty years, you have danced every day in service to the people of Revere. It's time to tune out the noise, to focus your attention on what's truly important in your life, Richie, the girls, and the grandkids. So congratulations, Representative. We love you, we're gonna miss you, and thank you for your service to your city. You've made your city proud over the years.
Thank you, Rich. I'm gonna call upon Madam Vincent's, Representative Vincent's successor, and our colleague, Jessica Gino, Council Gino.
Hey, Mr. President, sorry, I was on mute. Ricky, you said it all. That was a beautiful, beautiful speech, and you mentioned so many wonderful things about Rep. Vincent that I was going to call attention to, so thank you for that. But, you know, in keeping a brief, Rep. Vincent, you've done so much for our community. You have been a leader for our environmental issues. You've been a voice for those who felt left out of the conversation, and you've had your boots on the ground, and you've been working every day long before you got elected to the seat. So I want to thank you for everything you do for our community. You have left me with incredibly large shoes to fill, and I just want to thank you for being such a wonderful role model for young women in the city, and I'm so proud of you as a city councillor and also to call you family. So I wish you the best in your retirement, and thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Next is Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rosalie, I just want you to know, I didn't know you well until you became a state rep. And since then, we've worked together on well, on issues for the betterment of Revere, and I just want to thank you for your service, and thank you, we've become good friends, too. So I want to thank you for your friendship also. Good luck.
Thank you, councillor. Council Nowaselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rosalie, we've known each other many, many years. This is gonna be very brief. I thank you for everything. It's been a pleasure working with you. Before you were rep, when you were in age, and then we were a local citizen. And it's great having a birthday the same day as you, and we will continue to have our birthday dinners on March second every year for the future. I thank you very much, and I love you, babe. Thank you, Ms. President.
You, councillor. And Council Gu拉斯so.
Thank you, Mr. President. Back in the old days when Rosalie was an aide to Representative Bill Einstein, I've gotten acquaintance with her and saw the values that she possessed to do such a great job for Bill, and then to follow up with serving with Kathy and doing a great job with Kathy, and then realizing that the opportunity was there to serve the public as the elected person who better qualified to take the position and run with it than Rosalie Vincent. And I might say, she did a wonderful job, and she is respected within the community, and she's respected in the State House. And on my visits to the State House, I enjoyed her company, and a couple of issues I had to work with her, she handled it very, very well. She showed me the ropes of how to get the transportation and how to get in and speak with those people and those folks. She's just a valuable tool for the community, and I might say, she's passing off the baton to a very, very able and capable young lady who will do a great job also. So in that set, I wish her and Richie the best of luck in the world, and go and enjoy life, as I know you do, know how to do that, and do as much traveling as possible. Enjoy. Thank you for your service.
Councillor, Council Powers.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Rosalie, congratulations. About a week ago, Rosalie called me about an issue next to the building she lived in. And I took a look at it, and I found it to be a real mess. Subsequently, I contacted the building department, and the issue was taken care of. And I want to thank you, Rosalie, for bringing that to my attention, because I never would have seen it without going, getting out of my car and going in the backyard and looking at it. I want to thank you for our first meeting down on the beach when you were working as an aide to a representative, and I was a city councillor. And we discussed at that time the condition of Revere Beach Boulevard, the pavilions in need of repair, the dangerous lighting with the uncovered wiring. So much, many other things, the parking. We had, back then, we had the angle parking, and kids were pulling in at night and opening up their trunks, and there was loud music and alcohol and God knows what else. And Rosalie worked so hard on that to get that straightened out, worked with me. And every time I'd call her, she'd be right there, answering the phone, or if she was busy, she'd call me right back. There was always communication with our state representative then. And I want to, you know, all one has to do today is to take a walk along Revere Beach Boulevard, and you will see the improvements that were made. And a lot of that was done by Rosalie Vincent and her tenacious attitude toward getting a job done and getting it done right. And it just, it meant so much to me because it made my load a little lighter. And she's been a wonderful state representative, and she didn't stop there. I heard wheel-brader mentioned. She was over there at every meeting I would go to, Rosalie would be there, just speaking out in opposition to wheel-brader, and I can't thank her enough for her assistance, not only on those issues, but on many other issues, and as a state representative. She was always there, doing what you're supposed to do, doing the job right. Thank you again, Rosalie, and congratulations. And now you and Ricky, enjoy your lives with your family. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Zambudo, and we have Visconti, Rotando, and Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd be remiss if I didn't say a few words here. Rosalie and I have had one public disagreement, and we're not going to talk about that tonight. What we are going to talk about is all the great things that I believe she did for the city. Most recently, the efforts she put in on behalf of Capic, and that's not for me, I've been a twenty-one-year board member, but it's for the needy people, and she's always there for Capic, and she's held in very high regard there. There's many other things she's done for the city, and I know of one disagreement we've had, but I've been in agreement with everything else she's done. She's been a great public servant, and I just want to go on record of saying that thank you for your efforts, for all you did for the city, from the beach to all the other issues that you've done, and I have total respect for you, and I wish you all the best in your retirement.
Thank you, councillor. Council Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and say thank you to Rosalie for your service, your years of service, President of Revere, advocating for what's in the best interest of not only the city but the residents. Your unwavering commitment to be our voice at the state level has never gone unnoticed and will be sorely missed. I wish both you and Rich a long and healthy retirement together. Enjoy, you deserve it. Wish you both the best.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Rotando.
Thank you. One must recognize Representative Vincent's unwavering support for frontline workers, nurses in particular. Any issue that I would come to her with regarding nursing, she was there a hundred percent, unwavering, no question. And she dignified her office with poise and great intelligence, and I appreciate her work that she's done for our community as well as for the state. I wish you well, I'll see you on the beach, and enjoy your retirement, it's well deserved.
Thank you, councillor. And Madam Vincent, Council Morabito than myself, but if you see Council Rotando on the beach, feel free to just call us, we'll get it. Council Morabito. What a wonderful speech, council. You want to unmute it now?
Of course. That's the norm on social, that's the norm right now. But I actually knew Richard before I knew Representative Vincent, when I was working at Johnny's Food Master. Rosalie would send her hubby to the supermarket and do all the dirty work shopping for her. But he did a great job at it, so, Richard, excellent job.
Thank you.
But, you know, I have to say, but Rosalie, I knew Rosalie from being on the Beautification Committee, and I seen her dedication and the long hours she put in and her commitment. So when she ran for state rep, there was nothing more I wanted to do than support her and hold signs with Ricky "Out in the Rain" while the fires flew everywhere all over the street and were chasing them down the Point of Pines. Those are great memories. But now that you're retiring, I'm sure you'll make many more memories. I'm sure you'll still stay relevant in the city, as I said last week. One thing I noticed is you always stay humble. You've been working, you've worked many decades in the State House with representatives, senators, and you've always stayed so grounded, so humbled, so kind. You've never thought, acted as if you were better than anyone, and you were just so real, and that's the most important thing that a citizen, a fellow elected official can ask for in a public servant. So thank you for all you've ever done, whether it was volunteering on a nonprofit or fighting, helping me fight the discounted tolls, or helping someone with housing who was ready to be put out on the street. I can't thank you enough for so much that you have done, so much that had go unnoticed because people don't see the work you do behind the scenes, and people should really know how much you put into your job and how much you love it, and I'd be remiss if I didn't share that with the people who are watching. So thank you for all you've done, and all I can ask is please stay relevant and stay in the picture, because we'd miss you if you didn't.
Thank you, councillor. And if I may, Representative Vincent, you know, if you remember, I don't know if you do, but our first interaction was at the Einstein Senior Prom, and you were an aide at the time, but you were extremely welcoming to me. I was a newer face in this, in that ugly term called politics, and you made me feel very comfortable and welcomed me with a group of what I would consider shocks in the pool of politics in Revere, but you were very helpful. And then on top of it, again, when I was in a bit of a mission to work on the legalities of marijuana dispensaries in the city, and you were very helpful introducing me to people in the State House that helped guide me into some good conversations and supporting the city of Revere. So I really appreciate your work. Obviously, we appreciate you giving us the beautiful Ricky Sereno, he's been an asset to the council, and you have a wonderful family. I really congratulate you on your retirement. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Now it's on you, Madam Vincent.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to everyone here. I'm deeply touched by your kind words. I've known most of you for many, many years, and I consider you not only colleagues, but I consider you my friends. Throughout the years, as Council Zambudo alluded to, we may not have always agreed on everything, but the one thing that we have always agreed upon, all of us in city government and state government, was that we wanted the very best for the city of Revere and for the amazing people who live here. These last thirty years, I have been blessed to have been surrounded by my wonderful family, my friends, my colleagues, and my supporters, way too many to even begin to name tonight, but I just want them to all know that I'm forever grateful for their unwavering love and support. Someone mentioned my daughters, Wendy and Robin, who obviously are the light of my life, and they were the ones who, six years ago, encouraged me to run for elected office for the first time ever at the tender age of sixty-seven, an age when most people are talking retirement. Not me, my daughters are encouraging me to run for statewide, for state office. I just want to say thank you to both of them for giving me the courage to get out of my comfort zone and to take a chance. To my wonderful husband, Richie, who is also known as the saint, I mean, Steve alluded to the fact that he's shocked, okay, he does, but he's been an amazing partner, and I can guarantee you that no one is happier about my retirement than Rich.
That's true.
Councillor Sereno, thank you for being the right arm of Team Vincent. Thank you for being the best coworker and office mate ever. Together, we proved that being nice is actually a good thing, and that kindness is not a sign of weakness. We worked together, and we got the job done our way, and character does matter. Thank you, Ricky. I don't know what I would have done without you. The city of Revere is grateful, as I am, to have someone like you now in city government, but also working in state government alongside me. I was also very blessed to have been part of the best state delegation ever. Speaker DeLeo and Senator Boncori, thank you for your friendship, guidance, and my assistance throughout my time as state representative. And finally, to our new state representative-elect, Jessica Janino, I wish you great success, and I know that you will make the Sixteenth Suffolk District proud. I know that the Sixteenth Suffolk District is in great hands, and I will watch with pride on January sixth, when you get sworn into office, and probably like tonight, it'll be via Zoom, but unfortunately, this is the time, but I just want to say congratulations to you. And in closing, thank you all for this great honor, and I wish you all a blessed holiday season, and I pray that the year two thousand and twenty-one will be a year of healing. Thank you all, and I am forever grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Rep.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number four, public hearings. Hearing call is ordered on the minimum residential factor for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay. This being a public hearing, we're gonna ask to have any proponents wishing to speak, any proponents wishing to speak, please raise your hand. I think we have someone from the assessors' office that's supposed to be speaking. Dana Brangiaforte. How do I say it? Dana? Who was here?
It's that bad?
Dana, you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Great. Good evening.
You're a proponent?
Proponent. So, yeah, we're here tonight. We would encourage the council to adopt a minimum residential factor of point eight eight six eight. What this factor will do was allow us to create a split tax rate for both commercial and residential. It allows us to shift one hundred and seventy-five percent, which is the max allowable under the law, and that helps us to create the lowest tax rate for the residential properties. So while I'm here, I always like to give a little recap of what happened to values this year, and as a result, if that minimum residential factor is adopted, what the tax rate would be and how that kind of affects taxes throughout this fiscal year. So if that is adopted, the proposed tax rate this fiscal year for residential would be eleven dollars and six cents. So that is down twenty cents from the prior fiscal year. Last year was eleven dollars, twenty-six cents. For the commercial tax rate proposed would be twenty-one dollars, eighty-three cents. That is down five cents from prior fiscal year. Last year's rate, twenty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. So for this year, value-wise, on the single-family value, it went up just a little bit, about one point three percent, and what that actually does, if we do adopt those tax rates, is it actually lowers the average single-family tax bill about thirty-two dollars for this fiscal year. On condominiums, their assessed values this fiscal year increased on average about nine point six percent, so they would see a slight increase of about two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, again, on average. average. For two-family properties, they saw about a 4.5% increase on values. And the average tax bill would increase around $119. For three-family properties, they saw about a 2.7% increase in value and average tax bill increased around $155. So overall, you know, again, we are seeing some increases, single family kind of staying even or dropping a little bit. You know, this is a, this is a little bit of a different year because with the introduction of the Amazon property. So where we did have the increase in the tax levy of about $2.6 million, Amazon is picking up a large chunk of that. They're picking up about 1.6 million of that levy increase. So that's helping to stabilize the residential tax increases a little bit. So definitely, we're starting to see the fruits of our labor. We're, you know, year after year, we're pounding on, you know, more commercial, more commercial development. That's finally kind of happening and trying, you know, helping to soften the blow on the residential side a little bit. That being said, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. So just being a public hearing, we're going to still stay open to the proponents in the audience. Any proponents wishing to speak? I see one person with the hand raised, Eric Lampadecchio. Are you a proponent?
Yes, Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Taplia, proponent. Dana, John Brangia, and the whole assessors office team does their homework. And I'm fully confident they've done their homework here to get residents the best rate possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Any, any other proponents, any other proponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close that side of the hearing. We're going to open up the city councils. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Council President. Dana, thank you for your hard work. I just have a question for myself, for my edification. What was our non-residential commercial increase this year?
Commercial overall, the values didn't change that much. They stayed pretty flat.
No, as far as growth, I should say. I apologize.
Oh, growth, yes. The growth, yes, the growth this year, commercial wise, was, was very big. It was actually one of the first years where the growth on the commercial side outpaced the residential side.
Could you, could you provide, are you able to provide that? I know it's kind of a surprise question.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So our total commercial growth was, let me just calculate it out here. 1.676 million. So almost 1.7 million in tax dollars on the commercial growth side. And just to put that in perspective, the residential was about almost 1.2 million.
Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Great question. Council Powers and Council Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dana, I have a question for you. Residential versus, well, both of these, residential, but let's say apartments versus condominiums. How does that benefit the city? Dollar wise, with regard to the assessments?
Sure. You know, they're both taxed at the residential tax rate in accordance with the state law. But value wise, you know, condominiums are certainly much more valuable. So if we had a building with 100 units in it that were apartments, or 100 units that were condominiums, you know, total value wise, the condominiums, you know, would, would be much more valuable. That's the reason why people do condominium conversions and things like that.
So it would be, it would be more beneficial to the city if a project was being planned to have that project to be condominiums versus apartments. Am I correct?
I would agree 100%. Condominiums definitely much more valuable. And there certainly is a demand in the city for condominiums. And that's why, if you look at recapping what I said, you know, condos have the largest increase in value because there is such a demand there. And it has been the trend, you know, for the last couple of years.
I believe that. I've had people, when I'm walking the beach, say to me, how much are those units going to sell for? And they weren't units that were selling, they were apartments.
Right, right.
I think it's so much more beneficial to go with condos in the city. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Great point. Thank you, Counselor. Council Zambudo, then Council Novoselfski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope my internet is functioning here. I'm having, having a little trouble here tonight. Dana, I want to thank you for your service. You do a great job. You're always right there. Whenever I ask a question, you always get the answer. I think your presentation was very positive here tonight. Let me ask you, some of the new growth, have we realized anything on the HYM project yet? Is there, where do we stand on that? Is that anything?
Yeah, sure. So next year is, is when we're gonna, when we're gonna realize that growth. They're finalizing their plans now as far as subdivisions. So they're actually going to create separate lots for, for each parcel in each building to be on. I actually had several communications with them going back and forth to give them some projections on what their tax bill is going to look like over the next several years and throughout the completion of their project. But we'll actually realize some, some real tax dollars for next fiscal year, when I'll be subdividing their land and putting on, you know, what their approvals are, apartments, hotel, and commercial development.
I don't know if you know, is the innovation building coming online next year or starting next year?
I believe that's starting next year, right. Along with apartment building and possibly the hotel. I know Bob O'Brien is on here. I'm sure he could expand on that better than I can.
Yeah. I only bring it up because I, I know the residents are, I've seen the activity down there. I don't think a lot of people understand what that is going to do for the city's tax base, what, what, what a, what a game changer that really is.
Absolutely. I think that's the right choice of words, Counselor, is game changer. I mean, the, the amount of growth that that'll bring into the city is something that has never been seen before.
Right. Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Novoselfski. You, turn to the, Counselor.
Here we go. Sorry about that. Dana, I know you mentioned, you know, the single family costs and the two-family and condos. What about the 408s and the multi-unit changes?
Yeah. Let me just find on the 408s. 408s are about a 3% increase in value. So that would be, again, around $155 tax increase. On the larger scale, on the bigger apartment buildings, they stayed pretty flat or saw a slight increase as well.
No, also too, sir, if regarding the, what's already put in use as far as the new construction, some of the apartment houses on Ocean Avenue, I know you have, next year, we'll probably get a lot of the Boulevard buildings in, in play. Some of the condos, you know, there's one on American Legion Highway that should be coming in play soon. There's a new one on Ocean Avenue that's going to be in play next year, hopefully. So those are some of the condos that you were talking about. Again, not enough. I know you got a new one up in Washington Ave that came online a few years ago. But, you know, I think the city's doing very, very well. We have a lot, lot more great potential other than HYM things. You got 205 Revere Beach Parkway that's online. You got the new hotel down there that's online. You got the new avenue on the American Legion Highway that's coming online, if it's on already. So I know our tax rate has gone down, you know, a few cents, but I would hopefully would expect next year, it'll go down in the dollar figures rather than the cent figures. So with that, you know, I thank you. You guys do a great job. You're very productive in the assessors office, you and John and Matt. And thank you for your service and your hard work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor, Counsel Visconti, and then Counsel Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question regarding those average increases. Is there a particular part of the city that will see more of an increase than others? I know these are just averages, but you're doing the data. Have you noticed a particular part of the city that has gone up compared to other parts of the city?
This year was a little more normalized than in the past. You know, the past, we've seen maybe sometimes West Revere gets, gets a larger increase. Sometimes it's, you know, Council Novoselfski's area was a couple of years ago, and sometimes the beach a little more than others. This year, it seems to be a little more normalized as the single and, and twos and threes go. I think the condos as a whole is kind of spread out. And then, of course, the, the beach buildings themselves are kind of their own story on their own. You know, each of those are kind of 7, 8% increases, some of them as high as 11. But I think on the singles, the ones and the twos, it's a little more normalized. And everybody's kind of, kind of in the same boat this year.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Dana, Chairman Brangia Forty. You know, being my first year on the council, he reached out to me last week and he, you know, he went through this all with me. And I just want to appreciate, I just want to express my appreciation for you doing that. And it helped me understand that with Amazon coming online on American Legion Highway, you know, that really, that helped with regard to the commercial tax base. And I'm excited that once the Amazon at the movie theater comes online, I think that too will help to stabilize the residential tax rate as well. So even though some may, you know, express concerns about these distribution centers coming, they're actually, they really are helping to make sure the tax rate for residents is the lowest that it can be. So thank you, Dana. Thank you, John. And thank you to your, to your offices.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor, Council Powers, trying to... Council Powers, you're on mute. Council Powers, you're on mute.
All my test results came back good.
Wonderful. Okay.
You're on mute.
Mr. Brangia Forty.
Yes.
Thanks for being here tonight. I, I know that I usually butcher your name, so I hopefully, I worked on it over the last couple of days.
Got it right there, Mr. President. Thank you.
It looks like, it looks like everyone's in favor. And I would offer this to the clerk. Madam Clerk.
For the roll call?
Yes.
On the roll call, shall the city council adopt a residential factor of 0.886758 to enable the Board of Assessors to establish the tax rate for fiscal year 2021? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Abenaso.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the minimum residential factor has been adopted.
Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I just had one question, one minute for Dana, if he's still there.
Still here.
He is.
My understanding is that there's probably over 300 vehicles over at the Amazon property, delivery vehicles that they travel with. Now, are we getting the excise tax for those vehicles in the city?
I believe we are getting the excise tax for those vehicles. I'm told that they have been registered in the city. We haven't realized that yet. The registry does commitments every couple of months. I haven't seen the registry do those commitments.
They're all relatively new vehicles, and they are principally grounded in the city of Revere. So that should be a, a good amount of revenue coming into the city, I would hope.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Calendar item number five, hearing call is ordered on an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere relative to kennels.
Madam Clerk, just, just to let the council know, we have about eight more public hearings in front of us. So if you can keep your comments brief, and we're going to open them up, each one to the proponents and opponents. And what I would do is on this one is opening up as a public hearing to any proponents in the audience, any proponents wishing to speak. I see Michael Tucker. Michael Tucker, you're using an older version of Zoom. I'm going to promote you to panel so you can speak. Mr. Tucker. There you go.
Michael Tucker, 9 Ellington Street, Revere. I just want to voice that I'm a proponent for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents in the audience wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. And any opponents, opponents in the audience wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any councils wishing to speak on the motion? On the public hearing. Counsel Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, I put this motion in, it's, it's one of those deals where it's, it's just, it's a situation we've run into recently, and it required a zoning Board of Appeals. I think it's, it's once in a blue moon, something like this will happen. But I just, I felt, I felt it was necessary to put this in just in case it, I think the ordinance was never designed to prevent somebody when it was separated by a highway. So that, that's the only point. And I think it's, it's more just home, just clean up.
This is some housekeeping, pretty much. Correct.
Thank you.
Any other councils?
Mr. President, I, I represent the area where this is going. I'm 100% in favor of this. I know the person that is the proponent, she does a wonderful job with her small business. And she's increasing that business a little now. And I think that is a good thing for the city of Revere. It would be nice if that was done all over America. People would be getting a good, good business in there. And I know she'll be available. If anyone has any concerns or complaints, she'll be there 100%. Or they can call me and I'll be there 100%. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. So as mentioned, this is a bit of housekeeping. This was somewhat favorable to the council already, but we wanted to clean it up as it, there was the highway issue that came into place. This is going to go to zoning, if no one else has anything to say. All in favor of referring this to zoning?
I don't think it's, I'm not sure it's necessary to go to zoning.
Madam Clerk, with the public hearing, can you bond us tonight?
No, you cannot. This is a zoning ordinance change. It also needs to go in front of the planning board there here. It's going to be held on the ballot tomorrow evening.
Yeah, okay. So we'll get the planning board's recommendations and put it into zoning.
And send it to zoning, yeah. Okay, great.
All in favor of referring to zoning? So, thank you.
Calendar item number six, hearing call is ordered on ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the city of Revere relative to transient vendors, door-to-door solicitors, and campuses.
We'll open this up as a public hearing. Any proponents in the audience, any proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents?
I'm not prepared to watch this.
Any opponents? Any opponents, hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. If I can just speak on this first, this was my this was, I submitted this motion and I did, if Madam Clerk, if you could enter for the record, there was a letter by Mary Gandolfo that I'd like to enter into the record and I'll have you put in for me. But in essence, a lot of this had to do with the transient vendor license and some of the consistencies that come along with that. So I would love to discuss this further in Legislative Affairs, but just wanted to kind of get you to understand the intention of my motion. But we have Counselor Zambudo and Counselor Powers, Counselor Zambudo, wish to speak?
Okay. Yeah, I'm in agreement with you, Mr. President. And I think that there needs to be some tweaking of the fees on the transient vendors. And looking forward to discussing this in committee.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I saw your ordinance, but I don't know what the changes were. It didn't show, it just showed that you're eliminating the whole ordinance and rewriting it. So I'd like to, you know, not now, but when we get into the committee for you to explain. Because when I was a city council back in seventy eight, seventy nine, we had a situation where somebody opened a flower flower booth up at North Gate. It was a flower shop directly across the street. And this guy was undercutting the poor flower shop by almost 100%. And the guy was almost losing his shirt. So that's why originally we put the $2,000 transient vendor fee to try and stop this. So, you know, I'd like to get a better clarification from you when the time comes. Thank you.
Absolutely. And of course, we will continue to protect the Revere businesses. That's that's for sure. Some of it was just, there was some inconsistencies and it was really because of the use, it was an outdated ordinance. And it did, it does need some cleanup to be consistent. So between us and the clerk's office, we want to clean this up so that it can be properly used in the future. Thank you. Any else, any other councils? All in favor, we're going to refer this to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number seven, hearing called is ordered on the petition of the McClellan Highway Development Company, LLC, care of the H Y M Investment Group, LLC, One Congress Street, Boston, Mass, for the purpose of considering the discontinuance and abandonment of a certain portion of Washburn Avenue, Revere, Mass, as illustrated on the petitioner's plan of discontinuance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And this being a public hearing, we're going to open it up to any proponents in the audience, any proponents wishing to speak? There's a raise hand function. Just give me a signal. Mr. O'Brien.
Hello, Counselor. Thank you very much, Counselor. Really great to see everybody tonight. Thank you so much for offering us the opportunity to to come before you. It's been some time. We have spent some time finishing the approvals for Suffolk Downs. And we're now, one of the things we can come back and report to you, as you've read probably in the newspaper, we have finished all the permits and approvals for all of the site at Suffolk Downs. And as we pledged to you from the very beginning, you know, we treat the site as one site. It's the same site all the way through. And and so tonight, really what we're about is is kind of going through the work that we've done so far in the last six months or so. We've been doing quite a bit of work on the site to prepare for groundbreaking that we hope will happen in the first half of next year, 2021. So I'd like to introduce my colleague, Mike Barowski, who's going to run the presentation. We're happy, of course, to answer any questions that people have. But in the interest of brevity, I'm just going to stop and say, thank you again. Great to see all your faces, great to hear your voices, and we've missed you. Great to be back in Revere.
And thank you. And just for the record, Tom O'Brien, H Y M Investments.
Yes, Counselor, I'm sorry, I didn't say that. Tom O'Brien, the H Y M Investment Group.
Thank you. Councilors, we're just going to have them put their presentation up as a proponent. And we'll have the audience, if there's any proponents and then we'll have opponents and then we'll have the council speak. So your partner, Mike, go ahead.
All right, thanks so much. So I'm also here with, can everybody hear me okay? Just to make sure.
Yes.
I'm also here with Jeff Heilberg, who's our civil engineer from Beals and Thomas. I'll just ask Jeff if he can bring up a plain, really an aerial view of the site. You should do that.
It's there.
Oh. Hold on a second. No, that was my screen. I think Jeff is going to, here it goes. You should see a new image come up shortly. There we go. So we just wanted to orient you. We're here, we are here. We had for a petition for a discontinuation away. So we just wanted to reorient everybody towards the site. As many people know, this is an outdated air review because we have now demolished the horse barns. As many people know from driving by the site, it's starting to transform. And we, of course, are getting excited, as Tom said, to start construction in the middle of next year. If we can just zoom in a little bit. There we go. So now zooming in, as many folks are also aware, our first phase of development is right near the Beachmont Tea Station or what we've called our Phase One R. So, you know, we feel like, you know, this is the right place to start the Suffolk Downs development. As many, as many of you know, we've also, you know, we've been working on the design throughout the last 12 months or so. So, you know, again, we're excited to be here. The reason, the reason that we're here today is we have submitted a petition for discontinuation away. And so that is along Washburn Avenue. As you can see, Washburn Avenue, as many people know, is a dead end in both directions. And if we can just zoom in a little bit more. Thanks, Jeff. So you can see, we Washburn Avenue dead ends at a two-family house, which we own. And so we own that home and also the wetlands areas to the south. And we also own what's the area on the other side of the street, which is, of course, the Suffolk Downs site. There we go. And so we are here tonight to request a petition to discontinue that road. There is really nothing farther south of that road. There is really just some tall, ungrown, really outgrown brush and trees. And so this would, this would be primarily, one, a cleanup item. And in addition, this is part of our resiliency plan for Suffolk Downs to assist with flooding issues that may happen in the area downstream, also on Washburn Avenue, downstream in other Beachmont neighborhoods, the MBTA parking lot and Donley Square. So this would help facilitate this request for discontinuance at this location would help to facilitate that effort. And there's a plan that was included in in the submission, which we're happy to bring up as well.
I think this is pretty, well, I wouldn't say self-explanatory, but I think that the council's got a pretty good purview of it. Thank you. So listed as a proponent and we'll open it up to any attendees, any pro, any other proponents wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, this is Bob O'Brien. I live at Ten Ocean Avenue and I'm Director of Planning and Development for the city of Revere. And we are here in unequivocal support for this application. As with all things great and small involving Suffolk Downs, H Y M has been extremely forthcoming with us about their plans, the rationale for disclosure, the potential climate resiliency benefits of it. And in all respects, they have satisfied the requirements of all of the city agencies. And we think this merits your prompt and positive support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. No relation. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents wishing to speak? Using the raise hand function. Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Rotundo. Apologize, Counselor McKenna, I didn't see that.
Thank you about that, sorry. Anything that we can do to move this along tonight would be of great help to the city. I think one could not understate the commitment by H Y M and Mr. O'Brien. He's been forthright. He's been honest and dedicated to the city and we owe that particular dedication. And that said, if we could move this along tonight, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we do come to an agreement, we'll be able to vote on this tonight. Counselor McKenna, this is Joe Ward. I apologize, I should have watched you first.
Mr. President, I just, I just want to know, you're not going to do anything with the wetlands? You're just going to clean them up and preserve them as an overflow of water flooded? Michael?
Correct. There's, there's going to be no development on those wetlands. Those are wetlands that are not developable. So we're really not going to touch.
One of the things that I talked with Tom in about is saving those trees. There's a number of different kinds of variety of trees that act as a barrier to Beachmont. And I was just wondering, I know he said he would save as many as he could, but I'm going to ask you, Michael, also, are you going to try to save the trees?
If Tom said we're saving the trees, we're saving the trees. So yes, there's no plan to do anything with those trees. You know, the trees that are not on the Suffolk Downs site. If you're talking about, there's been, there's many trees within the wetlands area that we, you know, that we recently acquired. But we're going to work our best to save as many trees as we can, as Tom said.
Great. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, I'm a big supporter of this project. I have been since day one. And I, as I mentioned earlier during the assessors' presentation, I'm looking forward to groundbreaking and getting some tax revenue from the Innovation Building and hotels and whatever else is going to start over there. So I'm excited about it and I'm certainly going to vote in favor of it tonight. And H Y M and Tom O'Brien has been a man of his word like no other developer I've ever seen. So we're thrilled that this is moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify, is this taking in the entirety of Washburn Avenue from Mulchrop Avenue up to the dead end?
No, this is just this, if you can see the hands on your screen right there. There is just a, we are proposing to discontinue the way. If you can just go there, of course, Jeff.
I believe that's where the MBTA used to run up through there. Over to Orion Heights.
For the MBTA, you can see the MBTA tracks are where the hand on the screen is moving. We're proposing to discontinue the way approximately in the location just south of where that last house is. Washburn, just south of that.
Okay. I understand it now. I certainly will be supporting this this evening. I think it's the almost beginning of a great project for the city of Revere that will put Revere once again on the map. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. And any other counselors? Hearing and seeing none. So I would agree as well. I think I speak for my colleagues in saying that, you know, this is going to help get this project going. Counselor McKenna seems to be very good about it. And also, as mentioned, you, since you've come to this process now, it's been almost four years. You've done a wonderful job of being forthright with us and open and honest and transparent. So we really appreciate that and I'll be happy to support you tonight. All in favor, Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Yes. Shall the City Council discontinue and abandon a certain portion of Washburn Avenue, Revere, Mass, as illustrated on the petitioner's plan dated October 2, 2020? Counselor Janino. Counselor Janino?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes.
Voting yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serrano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, this portion of Washburn Avenue has been discontinued.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing called is ordered on the application of Squire Road Realty LLC, requesting an amendment to the zoning map of the city of Revere. Lot numbered as Lot A at 398 Squire Road is being changed from residential B, RB District, to the general business district.
Thank you. And this is another public hearing. It's going to go to proponents, opponents, and it's going to eventually go to zoning. So any proponents in the audience wishing to speak? I believe we have representative from the project.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Larry Simioni and I represent Squire Road Realty Trust LLC. The manager is Darren Maggio. We're seeking a zoning map change in accordance with seventeen, twelve, ten through thirty. Essentially, if you look at the application and exhibit one, you'll see that Lot A is the focus of our attention. It's approximately 5,713 square feet, plus or minus. It currently is a split lot. That means it has the garage area is general business. It goes on and touches some portion of the principal two-family structure. And it is a two-family and that's in the RB District. So essentially, our goal is to attempt to make the entire lot GB, taking that portion of the RB District and asking the court, the council for a change of that portion to GB. This will allow us to have uniform zoning of that parcel. It will also allow us the opportunity to potentially put one unit back into the two-family that was there many years ago, rather than try to put a unit at the, in the GB District side, you know, in the garage. And it just is very costly and it really is not the best design. And we're hoping that we could at least convince the council that if we're allowed to add one unit, we'll play, we will be able to place safeguards on this property by not allowing anything more than a three-family while at the same time establishing a prohibition against any future general business use of the of the property. And so at this point, I'll just answer any questions that you and the council members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Simioni. Any other proponents in the audience wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents in the audience wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. And Counselor Serrano.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is in my ward. I've spoken with Attorney Simioni. My concern was that if we, if we change the zoning on this to general business that in, you know, five or 10 years down the line, if Mr. Maggio decided to sell the property and it went from residential business with a general business parcel to all general business, my biggest concern was that he could sell it off and it could become more than what it is. You know, whether it be more apartments or more, actually even a commercial use in that spot. The neighbor, so if you look, if you look at the parcel, the neighbor to the left, right on the corner of Pemberton Street and Squire Road, that is commercial. However, then you travel up and it becomes more residential. So my concern would be that I would want it to remain residential, not become anything more than the three units, as well as not become anything commercial. So if we can do it, and I believe we can do it through a covenant and request a deed restriction, if we can do that, I would be comfortable. If we cannot do that, I would not be supported. But I do think that we can work that out in subcommittee and I would be okay with that. Like I said, I just want to protect Stevens Street because it's at the corner of Stevens Street. I don't want it to become intrusive, but if he's just looking to put back in an apartment that used to be in the, you know, in the two-family structure, I understand that relief request and I would be supportive. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Okay, this is going to go to zoning and we'll further discuss that. Counselor, Mr. Simioni, just curiosity, would you be, you feel confident that that would be something with a deed restriction you'd be able to accomplish?
Yes. Can you hear me, Mr. President?
Yep, yep.
Yes, the answer is yes. I think what would happen is is that I'd proffer a deed, a covenant and deed restriction to the subcommittee for the chairman, Mr. Zambudo, to review. And it would go along with the vote. We'd accomplish the task that we've been talking about. And the ward council has set forth as an opportunity to help the neighborhood, safeguard the neighborhood for the future, while allowing a little relief to my client, which is deeply appreciated.
Great. Thank you. All in favor of referring to zoning? So order.
Calendar item number nine, hearing called is ordered on the application Counting item number nine, hearing called is ordered on the application of Fonseca Real Estate LLC 209 Broadway, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to install an awning at 209 Broadway.
Thank you. In the public hearing, we're going to open this up to any proponents in the audience. Any proponents in the audience wishing to speak?
Mr. President, my name is Attorney Larry Simioni. Our office is at 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. I represent Fonseca Real Estate LLC, who seeks an application for overhead sign and awning permit. Let me say this to Mr. President specifically toward Council McKenna. My client hired a contractor and that contractor failed to abide by the rules and regulations that are set forth in this type of application. The particular sign, which we hope you like, has been constructed in violation of the law, and we asked that somehow that you allow this awning to remain and us to move forward with the project. The described materials are paniflex vinyl and galvanized iron, and the sign is 22 feet and wide. And you could see the presentation of exhibit one of the sign that's there now. And again, I can only say and apologize to the council that the contractor did not abide by the rules and we're, I guess, we're asking you to not penalize Mr. Fonseca, who has worked very hard, him and his wife, in rehabilitating 209 Broadway and also looking forward to rehabilitating 225 Broadway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simioni. Any other proponents? Any other proponents in the audience wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents in the audience wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. We'll open up to councilors. Counselor McKenna, being your ward.
Thank you, Mr. President. I went by and saw it. I don't have a problem with it.
Any other councilors? Okay. I did have a question. I think it looks nice. And we have had this group in front of us a few times. They've been doing it seems to be a nice job. But Mr. Simioni, do they, are they going to continue working with that contractor that doesn't seem to know the rules and regulations of Revere?
Mr. President and to the members, it was like pulling teeth to get the limited information that's on that little application. So I can assure you, I don't think he'll be first call for the next awning on 225 Broadway.
All right. Thank you. Any other councilors? So Madam Clerk?
Sure. There is, we are missing a bond as part of the application. It is required. Just let the council know.
So this would be approved contingent upon the bond, correct?
Okay.
Thank you.
Shall the City Council approve an awning permit to be exercised at 209 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts? Counselor Genino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido? Yes, Counselor Novoselfski?
Present.
Voting present, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the awning permit has been granted.
President, to the clerk, they have attained liability insurance policy, which I believe will be sent over to you tomorrow morning. It wasn't sent today.
Very good. Thank you. Counting item number 10, hearing called is ordered on the application of Stephen Caruso, trustee of R and S Realty Trust, seeking permission to operate a commercial automotive storage parking business for 910 vehicles on Lot 14 at 320 Charger Street.
Being a public hearing, we're going to open this up to any proponents in the audience? Any proponents wishing to speak?
Mr. President, I'm just wondering, can you see me?
No, it's okay.
Okay. I don't know why, but that's okay. Okay.
We see, we see.
Instructions here, and I'll try to, there you go.
Yep, okay.
So, Mr. President, Honorable Members of the City Council, this office, 300 Broadway, Lawrence A. Simioni, lawyer and representative of R and S Realty Trust in this matter before you. Essentially, Mr. President, members of the council, the trustees of the trust seek a special permit to establish a commercial automotive storage parking facility on Area A as established in, on exhibit A in the attached application. Specifically, this special permit would be granted in accordance with 171604 Row of the Table Use Regulations and the use defined under 1708165. The locus is Area A, which it is located in the Ted District. The locus is identified as Lot 14 on Charger Street. And that is 8.5 acres of land in total. It will have two, it currently has two non-conforming structures that are multiple-use structures on the premises. The lot, Area A, also complies with the Ted District and the frontage requirement of 150 feet on Charger Street and the minimum lot size requirement on 25,000 square feet for a minimum lot. Area A also includes, on the northbound side, one to one and a half acres of upland and wetlands, which shall not be part of the facility for which we want to grant the special permit. So ultimately, when you discount 8.5 from one to one and a half, we're really looking at a project that would be seven, a little over seven acres in total for the parking facility. Currently on the site, council is well aware that there exists Northgate Recycling. Northgate Recycling is a recycling corporation that was established in 1998 by special permit as honorable counsel in accordance with 1716040. And the corporation, Caruso Corp., which is a road construction company, which has been in business since 1975. As we discussed the proposal with respect to the storage facility, and you look at Area A and exhibit A, we're proposing 910 spaces as shown. The the cars that will be stored in this facility will supplement shortfalls needed during ongoing business by Avis Logan. Avis Logan has 6,000 vehicles in its fleet. And so when they have shortfalls or vehicles have to be moved out of service because they've met their 30,000 mile criteria to be a rent-a-con, then a draw would be made from this Revere storage lot. There will be five employees working there full-time. There'll be fencing, lighting, and security around the facility. The facility will be open at 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The current situation is that these new cars will be rotating in and out of the facility during one fiscal year. So you could start off with 910 cars at some point, and then 600 cars drawn out and 600 new cars are brought in. That would then require Avis to register and provide payment for excise taxes to some 1,500 vehicles, which would be approximately 3/4 of a million dollars, over and above the licensing fee the cars would each have to pay and the real estate taxes. There's a lot of questions the council had when I met with them as we went through the site view, and I thank you for taking your time to look at the site because it is a unique site in the city of Revere. And the Caruso family, who has been very successful because of their relationship with the council, thanks you for your cooperation. At this point, I would ask that we move this matter to the zoning subcommittee so that we can have a more detailed conversation of the traffic impacts. I know what Counselor Sorino and I have spoken on several times as to how the cars are coming in and when they're going to come in and what we can do to at least fine-tune that process. I can assure you, as I did Counselor Sorino, that it's cyclical. There'll be cars coming in for the most part in May through April and cars basically coming out at their top season in July and August. And I've been told by the Avis representatives that the storage yard, the storage facility will probably be empty because they'll, Logan, Avis Logan will have all their cars out and fleeted. That said, I think also the opportunity to talk about operational issues on, from, with either another person from Avis that will answer the questions the councilors would like to talk to and would like to bring that up at the subcommittee, as well as a full review of the plan with respect to wetlands and construction, you know, as, after we, if we're so lucky to get the council to see, see this as a positive step forward, we would be next going to the Conservation Commission, asking for an order of conditions. We'd like to have Rick Salvo of Engineering Alliance speak to that issue and fully inform the council as to what environmental impacts will be had and an order of condition, what it should look like, so that the council is well aware. As you know, the Conservation Commission does not take up the matter until all other permits are received. So we'll try to do that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And any other proponents wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Bob O'Brien. I live at 10 Ocean Avenue. I'm Director of Planning and Development for the city. This matter has been presented to the Site Plan Review Committee and pursuant to the requirements of a special permit, the order of conditions from the Site Plan Review Committee will be available for the City Council presentation and discussion.
Thank you. So you're in favor, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, sir.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents wishing to speak? Any opponents?
Mr. President, point of information, there is an opponent on, Mr. Robertson from Charger Street threw you to the clerk. If we can unmute the phone number ending in 0920.
0920. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Robinson, name and address to the record? Okay. I'm unmuting on my end. Any luck, Madam Clerk?
No, I'm asking the caller to unmute and there we go.
Hello. Good morning. Good evening.
Name and address to the record.
My name is Christine Robertson. I reside at 187 Charger Street, Revere. Thank you, Honorable Counsel, for listening, for taking my call. I have been a resident of Charger Street for well over 35 years. With the commercial development that has happened on the commercial end of Charger Street over the years, the traffic is absolutely astounding. There is not a peaceful day in this neighborhood, not one. The amount of trucks from the development down that area is I, there's no words. I have to tell you, there's a ton of wetlands down there. This needs to go before the Conservation Commission. There's wetlands all over the place down there, and we just don't need any more congestion in this area. With the development that's gone on in this city and the people that will be inundated here along with their cars, we're going to have gridlock every single day of the week. I'm, you know what, it really needs to be addressed, looked at, and I really think it's not a place that we need 900 additional cars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time. So on the record, as an opponent, any other opponents wishing to speak? We have Sherry.
It's actually Wayne Rose, 19 Donday Street, Revere, Mass. I'm just wondering if there was a traffic study done in that area for these people.
Mr. Simioni, was there a traffic study done?
There's not been a traffic study for the area, no.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Rose, would you be on the record as an opponent or proponent?
Well, I would. Am I, am I, am I being heard right now?
Yes.
I would just like to see a traffic study done in that area before you guys allow this. As that lady said, there is much traffic in that area. I think a study should be done, so I am against it at this time.
Okay, appreciate it. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. And councilors, I know Counselor Sorino, this is your ward.
Thank you, Mr. President. Threw you to the members of the council. I did, so when I initially heard 900 cars, I will be honest, I said, whoa, whoa, whoa. And I really, I still have concerns. But I was extremely concerned and quite frankly, at first, totally opposed. However, last week, I did go down and toured the site with Mr. Caruso and Attorney Simioni. And what I saw, I truly think would be an improvement for that site and for the area. So right now, the site is a stone construction yard where they, they crush, yeah, they crush stone, different bricks and concrete and whatnot. And then they ship it out and they receive materials that they crush and then they bring it out. So right now, there are actually a lot more trucks, from what I understand, going in and out than what, when we, if we allow this, the 900 car, the Avis car lot, there would actually be less of a traffic impact. And, you know, Mr. Caruso, I asked Mr. Caruso, my first question was, if not in Avis car lot, what can you put here by right? And what he told me was that, you know, in the coming years, he's looking to retire and he has people in his field who have approached him and who, you know, they could essentially continue operating a stone yard back then. So with that, I do think that having a car lot, a paved parking lot that's neat will be an improvement for that area. But obviously, the traffic is my biggest concern. To that, I've spoken with Attorney Simioni. The cars, from how I understand it, would be brought in via a car carrier truck, which carries about nine cars, and they would have about eight to 10 car carriers coming to the site per day. But right now, there are more trucks than eight to nine trucks that are going in and out. Now, when the cars come out and are going to Avis in East Boston, they would be coming out via shuttlers, which would mean that the individual cars would be coming out. And to that, I did ask, you know, how many per day? And I'm still waiting on that information that we can, you know, we'll get into in the subcommittee. But from what I understand, we can work that out, that the cars coming off the site would be an off-peak hour so not to impede in the traffic. And I, you know, honestly, the traffic is my biggest concern as well. So I know we are going to, you know, discuss that. I also think that there needs to be some mitigation if we allow this. I was thinking perhaps maybe Avis would be so kind as to adopt median strip and Squire Road. And I know we'll, you know, we'll talk more about that in subcommittee as we work on the details. But overall, I, you know, like I said, I had serious concerns and I almost, I almost, I said, you know, absolutely not. But the more I'm learning about it, I do think that it would be an improvement and it would it would be beneficial to the city as well because nearly 3/4 of a million dollars in taxes generated from the excise tax and the property tax would be coming into the city. So keep in mind, that's 3/4 of a million dollars. That is not, you know, more people using city services. That's not more people, you know, more children in our schools. So there are some pros to this that I do believe. So I look forward to a more fruitful discussion in the subcommittee. But that's where I stand as of right now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Morbido?
Unmute, Steve.
Sorry.
Sorry. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I was gonna echo the same points that, uh, my colleague just did. Um, I had an opportunity to visit the site as well. It's, believe it or not, I've never realized that site was there before. It's so far behind North Gate and it's so out of sight that you wouldn't even notice it there unless you drove down that unpaved, uh, rocky road. But what I noticed is, according to Mr. Caruso, there's over 140 trucks going in and out of there every day, um, with diesel engines that are making like revving noises. So I think as he, as he fades out of that business, uh, and you have idle, even if you have 900 cars that are idle, that are basically going to be parked there, maybe for weeks at a time, you're not going to see 140 diesel trucks coming in and out of that little neighborhood, um, every single day. I still think, um, I still think with a part, uh, shuttle parking lot, I think you're gonna see more idle cars and you're gonna see less traffic throughout the day, even, even though there's more vehicles there stored on the lot.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel McKenna, and then Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as you know, I was the, um, president for three years for the Friends of Belle Isle. Um, and my concerns were the wetlands abutting the Caruso property. But by viewing the land, uh, and listening to Mr. Caruso's story that he, uh, preserved these wetlands over the years, I was impressed. Um, without the trucks not coming in and out, I think the new proposal will be an asset to the abutting wetlands because it will be quiet and cleaner. But my biggest concern is the light. Um, environmental impact, uh, abutting the, um, marsh, marshlands, the wetlands, um, can we do something? My concern is the lights that will be on probably 24 hours a day to keep those cars safe. Um, I just feel that it might disturb the, uh, marshlands that are abutting this property. So that's just my concern. But I was very impressed with the whole, um, it's gonna be cleaner, uh, it's gonna be quiet, uh, and I think it's a great asset to the wetlands that abut that property, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Rotundo, and then Counsel Gino.
Uh, Mr. President, just for one second, uh, I'll get to my comments, but I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege and thank, uh, Claudio Ruiz for translating for our Spanish population. Gracias por tu ser. He is perfecto. But it's perfect that we have someone here translating for us, for our Spanish, uh, speakers. I think it's a great thing. Um, that said, uh, do have a little experience with, uh, Avis and actually this operation. Uh, one of my first jobs coming out of high school was to be a, a car shuttler. And what they generally do is they have a shuttle truck that takes you to a destination and you pick up the cars and then you bring them back to the airport. My hope, and this is my hope, is that in the future, as the city grows, both, uh, commercial and otherwise, that Avis moves their, uh, central business here. Uh, that would bring great revenue, huge revenue to the city of Revere, uh, in the sense of, uh, rental fees and so forth, uh, as well as the excise tax. Now, let us not take lightly, uh, Wayne Rose brings up a, a great point and asked him for a traffic study. What I will state is that one of the things we have to look at as a council is, how do we weigh this? Right now, there's a minimal amount of, uh, truck traffic coming out of there at 140 a day. You're saying, is that minimal? Yes, that, that is actually minimal. To take a look at what goes on over at Boston Sand and Gravel, which could be expanded over there at Caruso's with another operator, uh, could greatly increase that number to 280 a day. And that's on a, that's on a small number. Um, however, um, that said, uh, one also has to recognize the good work that Mr. Caruso has done to preserve the wetlands and more importantly, being a good neighbor, a corporate neighbor to our community. So with that said, I fully support the project. I will be voting yes for it, and, uh, thank you for your time. And again, Claudio, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So we have Counsel Guanasso and Counsel Gino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, in 19, uh, 2019, when I was council president, uh, Mr. Caruso called me and asked me, he said he has an idea, and he took me down to the site. I thought it was in the Wild West. It was a bumpy road going in the, in the back and I had no idea how big this property was. I just had no imagination. When you drive by that site, you would never notice that this property is there. So this is so well-hidden. If we can get it down to the cars and, and keep it at that, for God's sakes, Wonderland Dog Track, it's got over a thousand cars parked there. We're not getting, collecting 10 cents on excise taxes and all those cars there. Here we have a possibility of generating 910 plus for our, our excise tax. As was mentioned, three quarters of a million dollars. We have a lot of ambitious programs that are facing our community in the next coming years. High schools, additions to schools, improvements to us roadways. We have many, many projects on, on the drawing board. We need to get these funding sources. You know, un, un, unfortunately, this will generate a little bit of car traffic, but in terms of those trucks, I'm at North Gate at least three, four times a day. Those trucks are coming and they're all going down to that site. And it really would be a relief to see them go. Uh, and so I, I think it's might, it's a step in the right direction. And I think that, uh, Mr. Caruso is a type of individual that will treat the, the land properly. He will cure it and make it doable for the, the new, uh, residents and beneficial to our community. So I look forward to the zoning subcommittee, which I'm a member of, and, uh, working with the, Mr. Caruso's attorney and any, anyone else who wishes to join in, uh, to make Revere a better place.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. We have Counsel Gino, and just a reminder, this is gonna go to zoning. Counsel Gino.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will save my comments for zoning. But very briefly, I did have the pleasure of touring the site and, um, I agree with my colleagues, especially the Ward Counselor Serino. Um, you know, I think when you hear it, it sounds a little alarming, but when you actually go down there and see, uh, the scope of the site and how big it is and how far back it goes and really how out of the way it is, it makes sense. And, uh, one of the things I, I mentioned when I was down there, it's, it's kinda like a parking lot behind a parking lot behind a parking lot. So it certainly fits, uh, the area and what's around it, so I look forward to, uh, discussing it more in subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, it's going to my committee, so I'm not gonna elaborate on it. I have been to the site and everything everybody says is, you know, of course you hear 900 cars, you get alarmed. This is not unlike what we did at other sites. And the trade-off to, uh, to the trucks in, uh, to clean that area up from what's there now, I, I think most people that are alarmed don't know what's there now. It's a much better use and, uh, we'll settle all these level, uh.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Powers and Counsel Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, I, uh, I took the opportunity to get down to that site about a week ago, uh, with the attorney. And, uh, I was amazed to see just how far set back it was. Uh, there was no, uh, no homes in the area, uh, nothing really. The only thing close by was the, uh, the hotel at, uh, Circle. Uh, the area itself was a mess. In fact, I had to, uh, clean my shoes off when I left. There was nothing but mud and debris and everything else. So I think just, just by, just by the fact that, uh, the, the cars coming in and it can be controlled by, uh, by the rent-a-car company and also Mr. Caruso, uh, the, the revenue that will be derived from that property, which is, we're deriving no revenue now except the, uh, real estate tax for vacant property, uh, would be a tremendous boost to the city. I mean, if you have something, you should really, uh, make sure it's, uh, it's used, uh, adequately and bring some revenue into the city.
Thank you.
Yeah, I heard a, uh, a comment made earlier in this, uh, conversation with regard to Wonderland. Uh, right now, I don't think you'd find more than 70 or 80 cars down at Wonderland. And, uh, the reason I oppose the cars down at Wonderland and I would be in favor of something like this, uh, Wonderland is, uh, right on, uh, 1A. Those are cars that come in and out of there every day. Uh, and right now, uh, as I said, I'm opposed to that. Uh, that case is in Superior Court. And, uh, my understanding is that the, uh, judges in, uh, Superior Court are sitting right now on, because of this pandemic, more important matters than, uh, where a car is parked. But that is something that will be resolved. And I, my feeling is that, uh, Wonderland itself should be, because of the proximity to the airport, the proximity to downtown Boston, that, that should be, in my opinion, uh, commercial, uh, properties down there. And at the very, uh, you know, least, uh, mainly commercial, you know, very most mainly commercial. It's, it's, it's ideally suited because of the blue line, the, the.
Counsel, let's just, let's just write it back into the Squire property.
No, but I heard Wonderland mentioned earlier and I wanted to set the record straight.
I know, I know.
I want anybody else there thinking that we're allowing something there that we're not allowing.
You have taken care of that very well.
Thank you.
Let the rec, let, let the record show, Counsel Powers has handled that well. Um, Counselor Visconti, and I know that someone from the, uh, Ms. Serena wants to speak. And also, I know Nick Malason wants to speak for the Conservation Commission.
Thank you, uh, President. I'm, uh, I'm gonna be quick. Uh, I, uh, I also toured the site, uh, like everyone else, and, uh, I look forward to working with, uh, uh, Attorney Simeoni and, uh, Mr. Caruso in trying to get this done. I, I think it's, um, advantageous to the city to get this, um, through. I think it's smart business, uh, as well as, uh, it's, uh, low risk and high reward when you're talking about three quarters of a million dollars coming into the city, uh, with very little usage of, uh, city, um, services. So, uh, I look forward to going into, uh, planning and, uh, we'll, uh, take it from there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Serino.
Mr. President, I just wanted to, uh, say one quick thing. So right now, when trucks are going to the Caruso site, a lot of time they do cut through Charger Street and they're coming down that one way from Malden Street to Squire Road. And one thing I did say to Attorney Simeoni right off the bat, and he seemed, uh, willing to be able to do it, was that we write in the special permit that Avis is not to use, uh, city roadways, that they are to, um, you know, transport specifically, stay on Squire Road and come off of Charger Street on the North Gate side, not the residential side, um, heading up toward Malden Street that one way. So for residents of Charger Street in that area who are, are nervous that, you know, these car carriers or, or these cars could be coming up and down on their side streets, I wanna just allay that fear right now, that right off the bat, one thing you would do is make sure that they do not utilize city streets. So if they're rumbling through your, your neighborhood right now going to Caruso, that's gonna be going away. So that's, you know, that, that fear should be allayed. So thank you, Mr.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Malason?
Can you hear me, Counselor?
Yeah, name and address.
142, Nick Malason, 143 Lantern Road, under Chairman for the Conservation Commission. Uh, just like anybody else, you hear 900 cars, I'm a little worried. Uh, but dealing with Mr. Caruso over the last couple of years with conservation, I know he's a good businessman in the city and, uh, dealing with the counselor over the last couple of weeks, talking about this project, I think it'll be a much better project than, uh, the construction trucks every day. I think this will be a good project and it's something that I'd be in favor of with, uh, knowing that Mr. Caruso is gonna take care of the wetlands and keeping it like he has been. I really appreciate it. Thank you for letting me speak, Counselor.
Thank you, Nick. Thanks for being here.
Hello. Hello, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, uh, my, I'm Christine and I am still, uh, listening to the meeting. I, I have, I invite every one of you counselors to come and sit on the corner of, uh, the residential side of Charger Street and Squire Road and watch the amount of truck traffic that comes down this street every single day. I told Serina, Counsel Serino, that it got so bad that they shook the blinds off my window. I can't keep blinds on my front window anymore because they get shaken from the rumbling of the trucks. Pl, I've asked for a decibel recording in this area. I've asked for a traffic study in this area with both Mr. Romano from the mayor's office as well as Counselor Serino. And so I'm wondering where we stand. And also, just to let you know, I was on the Conservation Commission for 13 years. So I, I'm well acquainted with the Caruso property.
Thank you. And, um, you know, there's some great points. This is gonna be obviously discussed, uh, discussed in zoning. Um, and just a reminder, obviously, to everyone is, this, again, you know, I know what's been said a number of times, this would take a lot of the heavy trucks off the road, but, um, there's certainly some concerns from both parties to, to deal with, and we'll talk about that in, uh, zoning. All in favor of refund zoning? So, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the council.
Calendar item number 11, hearing called as ordered on the application of 21 Revere Beach Boulevard LLC, care of Gate Residential, 265 Franklin Street, Boston, Mass, requesting a Chapter 148 license to enable the appellate to store a total of 7,555 gallons of flammables and combustibles to be contained within 133 vehicles in a parking garage at 50 Ocean Avenue, Revere House.
Thank you. Uh, in this being a public hearing, we're gonna open up to any proponents in the audience wishing to speak. Any proponents?
Mr. Chairman, my name is, uh, Bob O'Brien. I'm Director of Development for the city of Revere. Live at 10 Ocean Avenue, uh, by coincidence, right next to this property. As you know, this is somewhat of a pro forma issue in that it just allows for the parking of vehicles with gas in their tanks. I believe there are two other projects up tonight for the same reason.
Right.
We very much support this as we have supported this project from the outset. It couldn't really be done without this approval and we urge you to, uh, approve it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank, uh, certainly. And, uh, just we'll continue on with the public hearing. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Is that Paul Moon?
Yes, Paul Moon, Code Red Consultants, 154 Turnpike Road in South Pearl. We are the Fire Protection Life Safety Consultant on behalf of the Development and Design Team. And we have coordinated the submission of this package as well as the interface with Deputy Cheever. So I just wanted to share with the group that all necessary materials have been coordinated through the fire department already for the storage of approximately 140 cars within the building itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. And obviously, just for the adoration, this is, uh, this is a license required to have a parking garage on, on site of a, a building. Uh, councils wishing to speak? Yeah, Counsel Zambudo.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, this is one of my pet peeves for years. These, these 148 licenses do not belong before the city council. They're signed off by the fire department. They should, they end there.
Right. I think we get, I think we get where you're going, uh, Counsel Zambudo, and we can maybe swap these out with the curb cuts. We'll give the, uh, we'll give up these permits.
Am I losing my internet again?
A little bit, Counselor. Any other councils wishing to speak?
Thanks.
Hearing and seeing none. Madam Clerk on the roll?
Shall the City Council approve a Chapter 148 license for the use indicated on the application to be exercised at 50 Ocean Avenue? Counsel Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoseltsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the Chapter 148 license has been granted. Item number 12, hearing called. Item number 12, hearing called as ordered on the application of 21 Revere Beach Boulevard LLC, care of Gate Residential, 265 Franklin Street, Boston, Mass., requesting a Chapter 148 license from the Revere City Council to enable the appellant to store a total of 7,952 gallons of flammables and combustibles to be contained within 140 vehicles in a parking garage at 21 Revere Beach Boulevard.
Being a public hearing, we're gonna open it up to any proponents in the audience? Any proponents wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, Bob O'Brien, live at 10 Ocean Avenue, Director of Development, Planning and Development for the city. We support this proposal for the same reason that we support the preceding one and will support the succeeding one. It simply approves effectively an onsite garage with allowance for parking of vehicles with gasoline in the tanks. I tend to agree with Counselor Zambuto that the fire department should probably suffice, but since it does not, on law, I would urge you to approve this addition as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Any other proponents? Mr. Moon?
Same role and feedback as the prior.
Thank you. Paul Moon for the record. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any opponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any councils wishing to speak?
Move the question.
Pardon me?
Move it.
Oh. Madam Clark?
Shall the, shall the city council approve a Chapter 148 license for the use indicated on the application to be exercised at 21 Revere Beach Boulevard? Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito. Yes, Counselor Novoselfski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serena.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti. Yes, and Counselor Zambuto.
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, the Chapter 148 license has been granted. Calendar item number 13, hearing called as ordered on the application of Satchem Revere LLC for Gharshav, Chelsea, Mass., requesting a Chapter 148 license to enable the appellant to store a total of 2,074 gallons of flammables to, to be contained within a CAT subbase fuel tank and 84 vehicles parked underneath a multifamily residential structure at 571 Revere Street.
And this being a public hearing, we're gonna open this up to any proponents in the audience? Any proponents in the audience wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, Bob O'Brien, Director of Planning and Development for the City of Revere. I live at 10 Ocean Avenue. And for the same reasons that we supported the previous two motions, we support this one.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
I'm also here as a proponent, Attorney Keryon Greenwood, Ambrosio Brown, LLP, with an address of 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere. I represent the petitioner as the city plan and chief of this project is for 84 cars at 571 Revere. With the subbase fuel tank, there would be a total of 2,074 gallons of flammable liquids stored at this site. The designs and plans have been approved by the fire department and signed off by the chief. And we'd ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any other, any opponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any councils wishing to speak? Counsel Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm speaking only because the building is there. It was something that I originally opposed. I wasn't happy with a building that size going there. However, the zoning was in place. It was zoned RC1. Would have allowed them to go 11 or 12 stories. As I said, the building is there. There are gonna be cars parked there. It's not, it's, I think it's more or less, a lack of a better word, phrase, a done deal. I mean, it's gonna happen. Good luck.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councils? On the motion, on the, I mean, on the public hearing? Madam Clark, all roll.
Shall the city council approve a Chapter 148 license for the use indicated on the application to be exercised at 571 Revere Street, Revere, Mass.? Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serena.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambuto.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith.
Yes.
Yes, the Chapter 148 license has been granted. Calendar item number 14, hearing called as ordered on a joint petition submitted by National Grid and Verizon to install one jointly owned pole on the sidewalk between 13 and 15 Sweeney Avenue and extend secondary from P1 to New Pole and install overhead service to 13B Sweeney Ave. In accordance with the plan on file.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Being a public hearing, any, we're gonna open this up to any proponents in the audience? Any proponents in the audience wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any opponents in the audience? Any opponents in the audience? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Councilors, Counsel Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is National Grid and Verizon, are they here?
You know, I didn't see anyone in there, Counselor.
No, I don't see.
Unbelievable. Then if, if they're not here, then.
Counselor, do you know the property that they're regarding though? Is it, is this the newer property?
I, I do. Yes, I do. And I actually, I have a concern. It, it's with those, those new, I don't know if they're townhouses or, actually, I think they are. They're townhouses or duplexes right on the corner of Sargent Street. And they, they would like to put a pole between the two new homes, which I wouldn't necessarily be approving. But between that 15th Sweeney Ave and 29th Sweeney Ave, there's a pole that there's an issue with, and I would like to get that resolved if we're going to approve it. But if they couldn't even come before us, I, I say we table this until the next year or send it to Public Works.
So we, because it's an advertised public hearing, we still have to have the hearing, but we don't have to vote affirmatively or negatively tonight. We can put it into Public Works. So we'll, we'll continue on with the public hearing. It does look like a couple of residents did want to join us and I wanted to give them an opportunity to speak. Mr. Moore? Were you a proponent or an opponent? Are you, you're, are you able to speak? Sorry. Mr. Moore, you there? I'm pretty sure he's a resident of that neighborhood as well. Okay. John Moore? Last call?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I apologize. John Moore, 76 Asti Avenue, Revere, Mass. As some may know, that I was actually the, the line foreman for Verizon for over, over 30 years for the city of Revere, for Verizon. I have retired since then. Presently, I am an opponent as we speak right now. Until like Counsel Serena has spoke of, there are many issues within the city of Revere as we speak. Double pole issues, poles that are unsafe, and I will give you an example. Asti Avenue itself, I have not only just complained, but when I was still in a pole with Verizon, a lot of those telephone poles have been tagged, what we call a C tag. That is a condemned pole. Per law, those poles are supposed to be replaced by whoever owns those poles, whether it's a joint ownership between National Grid and Verizon. Now, that's just my street alone. Those poles were personally tagged by myself, plant tickets were put in there. Basically, when it comes to any kind of pole work, whether it's double poles, condemned poles, or things of that nature, Verizon and or National Grid are not gonna get to it right away because it is, it is non-revenue generating work for them. And that's the reason why here, not just in the city of Revere, but in the whole entire area, why we always seem to always have issues with telephone poles. However, knowing this site where the duplexes are being put up right now between Sweeney Ave and Sargent Street, there is, there's presently a telephone run or a telephone pole run that we call right now. So basically, what this motion is calling for, or this hearing is called for, is putting a pole in the middle of an already existing run for cable, your telephones, your National Grid, and so forth and so on. So basically, you're gonna be coming short, like say, 150 foot run between poles from the top of Sargent Street going down to Sweeney Ave. And you're gonna be putting a pole in the middle of it, obviously, to service those new duplexes. But again, with the ongoing issues with telephone poles, not just in Revere, but in this area, I would be an opponent until there are more improvements here in the city of Revere, including condemned poles by yours truly from 25 years ago. Thank you, John. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Appreciate it. And so there's another resident that wishes to speak, and I know we're going backwards. I just want to remind, you know, this is just, I want to stay on the public record. I'm saying, a public hearing for this, this area. I, we, we're not gonna make this into the poll meeting tonight. So councils, if you can just refrain from turning this into that, I appreciate it. And there is no longer an attendee. Any councils? We have Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Counselor Serena and Mr. Moore for your commentary on this. And if a resident with the experience that Mr. Moore has is opposed to this, I think it would be bullish for us not to be opposed as well. I agree with where he's coming from. It's, it's not an immediate need. If it's new buildings, it's not like there's a resident that's out of service or in need of something right now. So I think that we should put this in committee. And number one, they should be here and be accountable for their public hearing. But number two, I think we have an axe to grind with them. And they've been doing a really good job and stepping up to the plate, but things are slowing down again. So we need to really keep on top of this and make sure that we're holding them accountable. Thank you.
Good point, good point. Counselor Zambuto.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, obviously, I'm gonna support my wide council on this, but I would ask you to put this in zoning because I think that I never want to hold up power going to, you know, somebody, he's a new, new construction, but somebody's probably bought these properties and looking to move into them. So I'd like to put it in zoning, bring, bring the people from National Grid or Verizon before us, solve the problems for the wide council and, and, and take it that way. I, I never want to be vindictive at the cost of hurting, especially new residents. I don't want to give them a bad taste in their mouth when they move in here. So let's, we could do both. So put it in zoning and we'll deal with it right away. And we'll get whatever problems in the area need to be solved, we'll get them solved. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, Counselor Novoselfski, you don't feel slighted by putting it in zoning, correct? You okay with the poll meeting?
Good luck to him.
All right, sounds good. I just didn't want to make you feel slighted. So Counselor Serena, all in favor of gonna go to zoning?
Mr. President, just one final thing. Because National Grid has a nasty little habit of not showing up to our meetings and then going ahead and pretending that we approved what we didn't approve. So I would say, Mr. President, through you to the clerk, if, first thing tomorrow morning, if you can email that National Grid liaison and tell them that they do not have approval to move forward and that this is going to zoning and that they do need to be at the zoning subcommittee. Because, so help me God, if they, if they, if I find out they installed this without having gone through us, I, I, you know, it's totally disrespectful and I'm getting sick of it. And it's, I've only been doing this for nine months and I'm sick of National Grid.
Gotcha. Absolutely.
Noted, Counselor.
All, all in favor of going zoning? Go order.
Take the way Ricky's dunked on it.
Well, Ricky's gonna run down Sweeney Ave knocking poles down tomorrow.
To that, we won't want him to starve it down.
Next up is the Public Works Subcommittee report.
Counselor Novoselfski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Subcommittee and Public Works met earlier before this council meeting to discuss the issue of Counselor Keith's motion about curb cuts. And we did have Paul Argenzio, the Superintendent of Public Works, present to explain cert curb cuts and what situations are occurring. What we decided was Paul's gonna give us a list of the rules from site plan review for conversions from one to two family and also curb cut situations on how many parking spaces there are needed. So we tabled it for now until the list can come back. And we can, as the city council, make recommendations to site plan review to potentially make people go through ZBA, through the zoning board of appeals, for certain approvals. So with that, it was tabled and we'll bring it up at the next potential meeting. Thank you.
Sounds good. So we're gonna table, Counsel Serena, did you have something to say on this? No? Okay, sorry. So we're just gonna table this into the next time we have a meeting with the.
For committee, Mr. President, yes.
Okay, wonderful. All in favor? Go order.
Calendar item number 16, communication from the city auditor relative to the library appropriation.
Mr. Viscay? Mr. Viscay? You there, Rich?
I think Cash is letting me in now. Can you hear me?
Yep, you can hear me.
Oh.
Hello.
I know you want to be seen, you know?
Yeah, I promoted him as a panelist. There you go.
All right. You got me now.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. President. We have an appropriation order before you for the library in the amount of $1,567. And this was a required because we, we follow the municipal appropriation requirement rules from the library that require us to appropriate a certain amount to make sure we stay in good standing with the state and get our state aid. And we did have a supplemental appropriation one year when we settled some contracts that actually tweaked that three-year average up beyond our appropriation. The amount that we need to appropriate is $1,567. So it's just a slight increase to make, make sure that we don't lose any of our state funding and we stay in compliance with the, with the Massachusetts Library Commission.
Thank you. Councilors, Counsel Rotundo? Counsel Rotundo, you there?
Yes, when we have a second, I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege. Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. Any other councils?
Motion approved.
Madam Clark?
Shall the city council approve an appropriation in the amount of $1,567 from free cash to library services? Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna. Counselor McKenna?
Seems like she might not be on right now.
Okay. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serena?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambuto?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Counsel Rotundo, we'll just, we'll take up.
Thank you. I, I did not want to forget that Melania is here also translating. And I want to thank her as well, as well as Claudio. And I did not want to leave you out. And I, again, thank you. Gracias por todo. Trasé. Chao.
Thank you, Counselor. Item number 17, Madam Clark?
I'm sorry, calendar item number 17, communication from the city auditor relative to appropriation for the resident parking sticker program.
Mr. Viscay?
Yes, thank you. As everyone's well aware, we are in the process of distributing upwards of 25,000 resident parking stickers to all of those residents who qualify. We are pretty much at the end of that process of getting all the stickers out to the residents. This was something that is new to the city. We did not have an appropriation for the cost of the stickers, which is $2.50 per sticker. Again, we're about 25,000 vehicles in the city, which is $62,500. We did have some costs for advertising. We printed out some warning stickers and other related expenses to this program. So I'm before you, just to get. So I'm before you just to get an appropriation in the amount of $65,000 so that we can ensure that we pay our vendors timely and then we can roll this program out and start enforcing.
Thank you, Mr. Visca. And it's my understanding that since this program will be established in the following budgets, this will just be a budget line, correct?
Exactly. Yeah, we, we really didn't know the scope of what, what we were into as far as what the cost would be, the amount of vehicles, et cetera. So we will build that into the budget for fiscal year '22. And we expect that the increased enforcement revenues and some of the other permitting revenues will offset these expenses in the, in the coming years. But for this year one, we do need to see this account so we can get this off the ground.
Okay. Thank you. Any councilors?
Motion approved.
Madam Clerk?
Tell the city council approve an appropriation in the amounts of $65,000 from free cash to parking supplies. Councilor Janino. Yes, Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo? Council Rotundo? Is absent. Council Sereno?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Item number 18, communication from the city auditor relative to the reduction of appropriation for the Revere Public Schools.
Madam? Mr. President? Madam Clerk, if you could record me as just prior, I was having difficulties with my wifi.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Rotundo wants to be on the record as a...
Thank you, folks.
As in favor.
Okay. On the Revere Public Schools, this is a bit of an awkward, unique situation here where we did approve a budget for the Revere schools with an anticipated amount of Chapter 70 revenue coming from the state. We did make it well aware that we may have to make an adjustment once these final numbers came out. We did get a reduction in the state aid by $1.9 million from what we estimated. We do fund the, the school budget at the net school spending requirement as promulgated by DESI. So the city's appropriation will just need to be decreased by the amount of the shortages of the Chapter 70 funding. There's no, no adverse impact on the school department. They have fully covered all of these costs using some of the coronavirus relief fund monies and other funding sources that get them back to where they need to be, which forgot to their budget. I have discussed this with Dr. Kelly and Matt Cruz, the school business manager. Everybody is on board with this reduction. It shouldn't come as any shock to any of the school committees about this, but it is certainly something that I've never done in 15 years doing this business. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions, but regardless, but this isn't any kind of slashing of a, of a budget that's having any adverse effect. This is just a reconciliation exercise so that we can, we can now have a final budget per DESI's net school spending requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Visca. And just before I open up to the councilors, there was two questions. One is, just wanted to make sure that this was our vote, not the school committee's vote. And you did clarify that?
Yeah, we, the city council is the appropriating body. We do appropriate a bottom line budget. And so there's only one line item that needs a vote on.
Right. Thank you. And just to, to all the councilors, I think you may have seen Dr. Kelly's letter stating that this is obviously has to do with the level funding from the state or the federal funding. So there will be no shortfall or there will not be any shortages in, in services to the students or to the district. Any, any councilors have any questions?
Motion approved.
Madam Clerk?
That the city council reduced the school department budget for fiscal year 2021 by $1,953,926. Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Voting yes. Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sereno?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo? Is absent. And Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been reduced. Calendar item number 19, communication from the city auditor relative to an appropriation for water and sewer rates retained earnings.
Mr. Visca?
Yes. Good evening. Yes, Mr. President, this is an appropriation from the water and sewer retained earnings to help stabilize the water and sewer rates for the residents. As you might know, we did not have any increase in the water rates for fiscal year 2021. We have previously used $2 million retained earnings to help stabilize the rates for the ratepayers of the city this year. We did have some renegotiation of some debt service structure with the MWR rate that is paying $840,000. So we now want to supplement that with an appropriation of 1.15 million so that we can have that effect of another $2 million of relief to the ratepayers for fiscal year '21.
Thank you. Any councilors?
Roll call.
Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $1,150,000 from the water and sewer retained earnings account to the water and sewer fund balance? Council Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sereno?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo? Is absent. And Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
And, Mr. Visca, just, just, just a reminder to the residents of Revere. So again, consecutive years, we've been able to stabilize and offer no increases in water rates to the citizens of the city.
Yes, sir. If I may have one second, counselor, I just wanted to bring to your attention that when we did contemplate the adoption of the 2021 budget, we did have a contingency vote of $1 million that we thought we may have needed to keep this budget in balance. But I will say, due to some of the positive growth numbers that came, the assessors was able to attain, as well as some positive numbers outside of Chapter 70 from the state, we will not have to have that $1 million vote. And we will be submitting the tax rate in the near future to get that rate certified and get those tax bills out. So we do not need to use $1 million that we thought we needed before, one-time revenues. And I think that's, that's to be noted and commended, especially for the, the Board of Assessors who did a good job grabbing all that growth. So thank you very much.
Thank you. It's good news even in times of, with a lot going on, especially currently in the economic environment. Very good news. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Happy holidays. Thank you. Take care.
Madam Clerk?
Item 20.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Calendar item number 20, communication from the mayor relative to an ordinance establishing a public arts commission.
We have Elle Baker, who's heading up this project. She's going to speak. Ms. Baker?
Hello, Council President Keith and councilors. This is an exciting opportunity for our community to embrace art. We've been trying to get some public art projects going forward. And I really feel strongly that creating a public art commission is going to suggest the opportunity to elevate and promote public art within the community. A lot of the public art initiatives, there are many layers and a myriad of steps that go from the idea of a public art project from either the city side or an artist's side, all the way through to implementation, including, you know, in a lot of public spaces, we also have to go through a permitting process. So I feel that forming a team to assist with artists and with the city to navigate through the process will really give artists a connection to the city and vice versa. And it will help with advocating new projects. It will help spearhead funding and grant funding sources. And essentially, it will expedite more public art that will help to brighten the city. We propose that we would start with a team of five members, although have the capacity to have up to seven, starting with five to just sort of establish what the roles and responsibilities will be of the commission. And then at that point, to see if there are any skills that are lacking and, and then to seek out more resources that can fill that gap. Until we're up and running, I feel that, you know, it might, you know, be best to start with five and then progress to seven. That's the story this short and long of it. If you guys have any questions, please feel free.
Thank you. I know there's a couple of councilors that had some questions or wanted to make some comments. So we'll start with Council Sereno?
Thank you, Mr. President. Elle, I think this is a great idea and I look forward to supporting it. I think more public art through the cities will certainly help to beautify our city even more than it already is. I just have a quick question. As I was reading this, it jogged my memory. And Elle, I don't know if you would know the answer to this, but in the fall of 2015, the city of Revere was awarded an Adams grant from the Mass Cultural Council in the amount of about $25,000, I believe. And from that grant, the city was going to create, actually, they were going to rehab, I think, one of the apartment buildings on Revere Beach Boulevard on the northern end near Nix. And it was going to be artists live, living in working space. And I was wondering if the administration, if we, is there any information or update?
I'm not aware of that, but I'm happy to look into...
On that, I know, you know, I know this is something a little different, but it just kind of jogged my memory.
I'm not aware of that grant. I think that was right when I first started out with the city, but I'm happy to look into it and follow up with you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Thank you, Elle.
Ms. McKenna? Our council artiste?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is long overdue. I know we talked about this four years ago with the mayor when we were putting up the development. And I think it's a wonderful idea. And thank you for initiating it. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank Council McKenna. Any other councilors? If I can speak to, you know, we're such a vibrant city and we already have some really nice art and cultural and art projects happening throughout the city, but certainly not enough. And I think that this will help reinvigorate that effort and couldn't, I'm very happy and excited for you to put this forth, Ms. Baker. So look forward to having this come to fruition.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. On the motion or on the communication? It's going to go into a public hearing for December 7th, 2020. All in favor?
Thank you.
Calendar item number 21, 341 through 34 are appointments. Sorry.
It's okay. Rudy, is that Rudy?
That would be the Beagle. Let's pour it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, could we take all of these appointments up together and put them into Appointment Subcommittee or?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Council Guanasso?
Mr. President, I've already met with the city clerk and established a date of time at 5:30 at our next regular meeting for all new coin teams.
All in favor?
On to motions. It should be noted that number, calendar item number 35 should have been withdrawn and not appeared on the calendar.
Mr. President, can I just say something on that motion?
Council Morabito?
Thank you. So I just want to, I did ask the city clerk to withdraw it, but since it's on the agenda, I'm going to speak on it quickly. Some, some of the residents may have heard late night or early morning disruptive sounds of like train whistles or train horns. At first, I thought I was going nuts because out of nowhere, three months ago, I started hearing train horns. So what happened was the Federal Railroad Administration decided to suspend the city of Chelsea's Quiet Zone designation and reestablished a train horn blowing at every railroad crossing through, throughout Chelsea. The Quiet Zone cannot continue until the city of Chelsea takes action to reduce the Quiet Zone Risk Index. So, which will require the installation, I believe, of four quadrant gates at Everett Avenue and Spruce Street in Chelsea. I believe somewhere along the line, the communication got lost. And the new town, Mayor Ambercino, former Mayor Ambercino, who is now the town manager of Chelsea, inherited this issue and is working to solve the issue. So hopefully, I don't know what the timeframe is. I know Council McKenna has spoke to him as well, and I know it went out to bid. I, I know she can speak more on it and provide more information.
Thank you, counselor. And Council, Council McKenna?
Thank you very much. So I did call town, town manager, Tom Ambercino. And yes, the communication was lost and all of a sudden the no Quiet Zone was pulled. It's going to take, it's, right now, it's a $3 million bid. It's going out for bid, or it is out for bid. It's not going to be until April or May that it's going to be fixed. So we're going to be, there's really nothing, he said, there's nothing we can do about it. And, you know, I know, Ms., Council Morabito put the motion in to expedite, you know, the fixings of these crossings, but he said there's really nothing they can do about it. This is the way it is. And it's, it's very disturbing that the residents have to put up with the whistles 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I've gotten a lot of calls from this. I put it on my Facebook page. I tried to explain what was going on. And it is on the Chelsea website. So if you want to read about it, it's on, the information's on the Chelsea website. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Yeah, there's been a number of articles that we've all shared recently, but explaining what's going on over there. We have Council Powers who's speaking. There's also an attendee wishing to speak. Council Powers?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We had a similar situation down in Oak Island at the crossing. There was a, an agreement made between the previous mayor that we rectify some safety issues down there. And they would stop blowing the whistle. Well, we weren't aware of it until sometime after the new mayor, Mayor Arigo became mayor. And we addressed that situation and subsequently they stopped. And it was, I think we spent about $200,000 just to rectify it. They were going to keep blowing those whistles until we rectified the situation with the crossing. And we did, and it's, it's worked out well. Thank you.
Counselor, to your point, a lot of people were upset with some of the works and modifications done to that crossing, but all that work is what has allowed them to not have to beep their horns. So...
Not only that, but we've, the crossings are working fine now, the modifications we made. And also, we have a new parking lot down there. It was, it was an old vacant overgrown lot that we can use to park probably 10, 10 cars in there if necessary for a neighborhood. So it worked out well. Thank you.
Council Sereno? And then we have an attendee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Personally, I hadn't heard the train horns until Council McKenna brought it to my attention. Now that's all I hear when I open my windows on Carlson Ave. But in all seriousness, this is a federally mandated project issue. And, you know, I was thinking perhaps maybe we could use our congressional delegation. We really, we never really seemed to call upon them, but I think it's time Senator Markey, Senator Warren, they, they step up for us. And maybe we could see if they work to expedite the process and expedite this with the city of Chelsea. I know Congresswoman Clark doesn't represent Chelsea. That's Congresswoman Presley. So I guess going through the, the two U.S. senators would be best. But I think, you know, maybe the federal delegation can offer us some assistance in expediting.
Good point. Good point. We should probably reach out to them as well. And in the audience, we have Mr. D'Chico?
Thank you, Council President Keith and members of the council. Not only is there an issue...
Not only is there an issue with the horn blowing, but on the lower Revere Street and behind Billy T's, and I don't know if anywhere else, there's also the issue with them idling in the middle of the night, staying in one spot for 20 minutes to 35 minutes, with the engines idling so loud. And I know Council Powers, I'm not sure if you're, if you're hearing it at your home, but it's down here, and a lot of the residents here are hearing it down this end from, from the Paul Revere School all the way down to, towards Neco Factory. So I don't know what, what they're doing, but maybe we can get the state delegation to do that, but it is, it is a nuisance. I don't know why they have to stop their trains here at 12, 12 at night till about 1:00 in the morning and just sit there and idling their trains all night. Move down, go to one behind Wonderland. But there's no reason why they should be sitting in here, these commuter rails, these commuter trails. So not only do we have to deal with the, the train's whistles, but we have to deal with them idling and getting nowhere. We're trying to send emails to the T, to commuter rail.
Thank you, Ralph. I haven't, I haven't heard any complaints from anyone to this point here. I have heard the horn a couple of times, and it seemed to be a little further off than this area here, but I did hear it a couple of times. And I hope that Mayor, Mayor Amber Cino will get this thing moving for us over there in Chelsea so the horn doesn't translate over here. Thank you.
Point, point of interest, please.
Mr. Council McKenna.
Can we send a letter tomorrow? Have the mayor send a letter to our state delegates, delegates, and, and instead of just saying it, we need to send it? So.
Can you put that in a form of a motion?
Yep. So a verbal motion, Madam Clerk, to have the mayor and the city council address our state delegation in support of, in support of expediting the services to rectify the Quiet Zone?
Mr. President, point of information, it's not a state issue. This is federal. These are federal guidelines from the National Railroad, or I, I forget the agency, but we looked into it last week, and it's, it's federal.
Federal Railroad Administration.
Yeah, it is.
Federal Railroad Administration.
So that should be to the federal delegation.
Correct.
State delegation. It's not.
Sorry, to our federal delegation.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk. Madam Janino, is that good?
The council could very well just amend Council Morabito's motion that's on the floor.
Okay.
Let's go.
Instead of creating a new one.
Sounds good. So all in favor of the, that motion with the amendments to offer it to our federal delegation with a letter from the city and the mayor?
Aye.
All in favor? Sought it. My neighbors up here on the hill, we, we were hearing it in the summer. I thought I was going nuts, my wife said, I think you're nuts. I was hearing them in, in the summer. Wasn't going nuts.
Calendar item number 36, motion presented by councilors Morabito and Janino that the city council ordered to a public hearing a proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of the City of Revere relative to wage theft prevention.
Council Mor, Council Morabito or Janino, who would like to go first?
Ladies. Okay.
All right. Okay, Council Morabito.
Was that a dig, President Keith?
No.
So I've been working on this wage theft ordinance for about six months, and Council Janino actually had the same idea, and she went to submit a motion as well. So we collaborated and came together and submitted this motion. What this ordinance will do, this wage theft prevention ordinance, it would prevent dishonest contractors and subcontractors and vendors from doing business with the city through public bids. So unfair employers and contractors who fail to pay overtime, tips, minimum wage, who misclassify employees, violate fair labor standards, practices and laws, people who take advantage of the working people. This conduct also hurts majority of the businesses who follow the laws, who put in bids. So I think this motion just protects our capital as a city, and it makes us, going further, it will help us have positive vendors to work with as well. More importantly, these regulations would require vendors and bidders who are hired by the city to abide by a set of conditions in effort to discourage wage theft. And wage theft affects all working people, especially people of color and women who are disproportionately affected by wage theft.
Thank you, Council. Council Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank my colleague, Councilor Morabito. You know, we were talking about this, and as he mentioned, it was something he was already working on. I didn't know that when I reached out to him. So he really made an idea that I had become a reality, and this was a lot of his hard work. So thank you, Steve. Basically, I was shocked that there wasn't already something like this in place in the city. And I think that it's something that we need to do. It's something that, you know, protects our workers' rights. It protects, you know, fair wages. It's just something that's all around good for the people of our city and for the city. So great job, Councilor Morabito, and I'm happy to share this with you.
And thank you for input, State Rep. Act.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Yeah, I would be 1,000% in favor of this. It raises the bar on the, on the standard that we expect to work in city Revere. Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, all in favor? Sought it.
It's ordered to a public hearing on the 7th. Calendar item number 37, motion presented by Councilor Novaselsky that the mayor direct the DPW to remove all "we buy houses" signage throughout the City of Revere.
Who's that?
I don't know. We made a motion to ban dogs from the council meeting.
No, we want more dogs. Council Novaselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, everybody has their pet peeve and things that irk them. Things that have been bothering me are these signs on the telephone poles all over the City of Revere, down in my neighborhood, your neighborhood, and it says, "We buy houses" and other signs. It's, it's just getting out of hand that these signs are allowed to stay there. And all I'm asking is that the mayor asks the Public Works guys, as they're driving around the city, I'm not saying to drive around just to look for these, but they're going to drive by them to stop, take a ladder and take these signs off. They're ridiculous. You know, we talk about beautifying our city, and these don't help. So I'm asking, you know, for your support and, you know, ask our DPW guys to, you know, add, add to the good shores that they're doing otherwise to help take these signs down. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great motion. And Council Novaselsky, would you be willing to amend this to, instead of just saying to remove all "we buy houses" signage that it's a, you know, to remove all solicitation signage? Because there are a ton of, you, you're not allowed to put any, any signs on public poles, and people do it all the time for various reasons. So would you be willing to?
I would not have a problem with that, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. As amended.
And any other, oh, any other councilors? We have another, we have a resident, oh, Council Morabito, then we'll.
Can I just say, I'm glad Council Novaselsky brought this before the council. It seems like, since I've been on the council for seven years, I feel like this comes up, is brought before the council every, every couple of years. And, yeah, these "we buy houses" signs really stick up, but to what Council Serena said, it should be all advertisement signs. You see so many, if you drive down Squire Road or American Legion Highway, all you see is signs popping up. It's just tawdry signs, and it's just visual pollution. So I commend my colleague for bringing that to the council's attention. And yeah, that would be great if, if any of our city workers were able to just take the signs and toss them, because they're garbage.
Thank you, Counselor. And Council Novaselsky.
Just if I may, Mr. President, you know, I know we're going to get a little feedback from Public Works guys, that some of these signs are in state roads, but we have to realize the poles are still on city property. So we still want to include Squire Road, Revere Beach Park, wherever they're driving. It's not going to take them that long to take a sign down. So I asked them to, you know, work with us and help us, you know, make the city cleaner, like they have been over the last year and a half. They've been doing a great job doing it, and I asked them to respond and respect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Grosso. You. Council Grosso, you're, you're muted still.
There's an ordinance on the books, and I know a couple of years ago, when people were having yard sales, the city, not the city, but the inspection services go down and find them. It's very easy to see, you give an address if it's a yard sale, and if they're selling something, there's a phone number. Now, why don't we start finding these people per each pole? They give very boldly the phone number, so we retrieve these, find them, and they will not, the issue will go away very, very quickly. But if we just simply say, let's put something on the books and not enforce it, or I have the DPW go down and remove them all, let's find them. I know a neighbor two doors down from me, she never, she does everything by the books. She had a little simple yard sale, and they find her. Now, I have this poor lady that lost her cat. She wraps these big white folders around with the description of the cat. Now, through the weather, they weathered them down. And so what happens? They find the cat, and we see all these poles that have these big ugly white things taped around them. And so we're left with an ugly structure throughout all the neighborhood until this person finds her cat. Now, we, we want to help and assist people, but we certainly don't want to do it at the cost of our neighbors. So I think simply finding them would be sufficient, and then you'd be surprised how much money we would get from it. Thank you.
Agreed. I'm going to let a couple residents speak, and I'll tell you a brief story about what happened with me. We have Ralph De Chico.
Thank you. Council Grosso, you just stole my thunder. I was going to say, we do have it on the books. It should be considered, it should be littering. It's city property, so they should be fined. And also, they should be charged, not only fined, they should be also charged for removal of the signs. So you hit them double pocket. You get them for removal of the signs, and you're giving them a fine for it, whether a new ordinance has to be created to get the, the charge for the removal of it or not. Then you hit them in the pocket, and you stop seeing them be put up, but it's considered littering by putting them on the city property. So thank you for bringing it up, Council Grosso.
Thank you. And we have Sherry, which I believe is Wayne Rose. You're going to guess.
Yes, Wayne Rose, 19, Gondike Street. I heard Squire Road mentioned, that's a state road. Maybe, maybe that should be on the state, ask the state to take them signs down on them roads. We pay a lot of money for the Public Works guys to do their jobs, and they're very, they're very well, they, they do their jobs. But I don't think they need extra work when we, when we need so much stuff done in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, point of information.
Did you point?
To Mr. Rose's point. So even though Squire Road and those roadways are our state streets and roadways, the sidewalks are city-owned, and the poles are on the city. So that's, even though they're, they're streets, that's, that's city property. So thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, point of, I think Wayne Rose is talking about, like, for instance, if you go on Squire Road, they might stick them in the, in the medium.
The medium, yep.
So I think that's where, where the confusion is.
Right. Well, I think it's a good point, too. Whoever's responsible for the area should be responsible for keeping them maintained.
Thanks.
Council Novaselsky. Ira, you good?
I got your back now. You got me?
Yep.
Thank you. With all due respect, you know, the issue and the fines is the responsibility of the Inspection Services Department, not the Public Works. And I know when I've spoken to them in the past, some of these phone numbers that they get, these people are from way out of town, and they don't care. They won't pay the fines. And, you know, I know this is a fact. You know, they've tried to contact them, they couldn't get information on where to send the bills or the fines or whatever. But, you know, you know, I, you know, with all due respect to everybody, you know, I, I just wanted a simple motion to ask our guys to spend some time, like, and again, it's not a long time to take down a sign, and they're not going to drive around specifically a whole day looking for signs. It's as they happen to drive by going to another job. Very simple, and, you know, I just think we're making a mountain out of a molehill for now. And agreed, some of these signs that people put up, lost cats, ridiculous, some of my favorite people, and I hate to say this, my National Guard people, I'll tell you, God, God bless him. I know he's looking for advertisement, but, you know, they're on every single telephone pole down in my neighborhood to join the National Guard. Hey, I'm retired from the National Guard, and I still got a problem with messing my neighborhood up and, you know, other things. And you have, you'll find an apartment, this stuff like that. I walk around my neighborhood myself, take the signs off poles. So I just want a simple request and not make a mountain out of a molehill. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And just kind of going back, you know, like you said, they can't necessarily always find these people. We're seeing a lot of real, realtor ones up on the tops of poles, contact realtors and things like that. But as you mentioned with the yard seal, in between me moving into my home that I purchased and the sale of the home, there was a yard sale to remove some of the stuff that was in the home prior. Unbeknownst to me, you know, months and months later, I get on a tax bill, a little sticker attached to my tax bill for yard sale sign, prior owner.
Keep in mind, it's funny.
I think it's funny that these, these pop up and, you know, the people getting fined from the, it's really the other people we should be dealing with. But all in favor on your motion, Counselor?
As amended.
As amended? Sought it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 38, motion presented by Council McKenna that the mayor requests the Public Health Director to require residents who are utilizing the food pantry to wear masks to prevent the spread of COVID. Folks who drive up to receive their packages are not wearing masks and exposing volunteers at the food pantry. This motion is offered in the interest of public health and safety.
Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is my ward, and a few of the volunteers of the Food Bank on Winterbav, they came up to me with the concerns that they're giving out food, and these people are driving up and, and they're opening doors to put the food in the backseat, or they're handing them, the people are rolling down their windows, and they don't, they're not wearing masks. So these volunteers are really, really concerned about getting COVID. And so they've asked me to suggest maybe signs, to be put visible signs. And you can, we can put whatever you want to put, that maybe say as when the people are entering to get their food, because they have to go around the building. It's the special needs building. They have, they, they start in the, the beginning of Winterbav, they go around the building, and they come out, and as soon as they come out, they get their food. But they were saying maybe in the beginning of the entrance, no masks, no food. I, I know that's harsh. Maybe we can come up with something a little bit softer, but I mean, I just think that, you know, I mean, they have concerns, and, and, you know, I think it's, it's valuable.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors on the motion? I think there's a few attendees that wish to speak on this. Oh, Council Novaselsky?
Mr. President, well, you know, I understand what Council McKenna is talking about, but have you approached Kim Hampton on this or any of the people in charge of these locations to, to do these things rather than have to go through a council motion?
No, I didn't, Councilor Novaselsky, because it was brought to my attention, I think it was Thursday before the meeting, the, the motions were due. So I put it in as a motion. And I know there's a lot of councilors out there and that put motions in that don't belong in front of the council, but I felt this is valuable, valuable. So, you know. So, you know, it is what it is.
Rightfully so. Thank you, Councilor. Councilor, and and there's a couple residents that wish to speak. Mr. DeChico.
Thank, thank you, Council President. I'm going to speak from experience here. I'm one of the volunteers that runs these food pantries and runs these pop-up drive-throughs. Our staff and volunteers, we always ask the residents to put on a mask at the side seat, especially the ones that drive up before they roll down their windows. If they don't have one, they roll down their window, we ask them to put one on. If they do not have one, we provide them with one. We give them, we provide over a thousand care kits that we receive from MGB, which was MBGH every week, that includes masks, sanitizers, soap and multi-language, multilingual safety and and local resources. Also, through the ambassador program, we distribute these MGH care kits at all the food programs, the school meal sites, the MBTA stations, the high school pedestrians using in the neighborhoods and also the state ambassador programs work with the city ambassador programs to coordinate additional PPE over each, every weekend at the shopping centers. I really like to know what volunteers are stating this because no volunteers have come up to us. We don't even open, let them open the windows if they don't have a mask on. We are diligent. We do it right at the entrances. If they do not have a mask on, they can't open their doors and they cannot open their windows. So I thank you, Ira, for bringing that up. We are very respectful for our volunteers. We we want the safety of all our volunteers are our number one priority so that we make sure that we have masks right at hand to hand them to them. If they do not have a mask, we do not let them open their window. We do not let them open their door. So I don't think that the health inspector needs to be involved in this. This, we've been doing this for nine months. Any councils that want to come down to our food pantries to see this firsthand, they'll see how these operations run and that we have PPEs, we have bags of them at every one of these food pantries that we give them out. So it is being done and our volunteers are our number one priority.
Okay, that that makes me feel better, but there were a few volunteers that approached me. So and I will not give up their names, but they did approach me.
You don't have to give up their names. They can come to me and and I'd like to know.
Are you the head of everything? Are you the head of this?
I had, I I run the food pantry at the Romney Marsh School and I have Megan Witter that runs it. We we have priorities that we have to do. We have protocols that we have to follow.
I was just asking you, are you the head of the Food Bank at the Special Needs Facility? That's what I'd like to know.
No, we work as a team.
Okay, that's what I I want to know. Well, maybe they don't feel comfortable coming up to you, so they're coming up to me. So.
Well, I I suggest they come up to somebody who's there onsite.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fair enough. And I just wanted, I know there's another resident wishing to speak. But, you know, Mr. DeChico, we do appreciate the work that you're doing over there and I know that all the councils do. But again, there are times and this doesn't mean, you know, certainly they're doing a very good job. I did have, I did spend some significant time helping with that earlier on in the relief efforts. And the residents and the people, people receiving were very gracious and for the most part were doing what they were supposed to do. But there's always going to be someone rogue. Mr. Rose, is that you?
It is Wayne Rose, nineteenth Thondike Street. I believe that Ms. McKenna is very correct. I I had this COVID. My mother passed away from it. If somebody's coming to get supplies of food they need, then they need not to put these people at risk. So they should all have masks on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And any any counselors? Again, I don't think anyone's disputing that. I think obviously Council McKenna is, wants to make sure that she's she's keeping constituents safe. And I know that it's the, it is the absolute best interest and I know that they are, the volunteers down there are doing a wonderful job and we appreciate all that they've done over the last eight months.
Safety.
Thank you. Absolutely. All in favor? So what?
Calendar item number thirty-nine, late communication, communication from the mayor relative to a holiday parking ticket amnesty for toy donations.
Mr. Mayor, anyone from the mayor's office on regards to this program? So if if you'd like, if any councils wish to speak on it, Madam Clerk, you can read the motion or pretty self-explanatory though, right?
Sure. Let me just just pull it up. Upon payment of an unpaid parking fine and the donation of a new unused toy of similar or greater value for or donation to a worthy charitable purpose, the parking director, beginning on December fourth, twenty twenty and ending at the close of business on December eighteenth, shall waive up to thirty dollars per ticket for a maximum of five tickets in unpaid parking fines as provided in the Revere Revised Ordinances Section ten point four eight point one six oh. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the parking director shall not waive any surcharge imposed by the Massachusetts Registry of Motor Vehicles, the RMB. If the parking director has notified the RMB of an unpaid fine and a non-renewal of license and or registration has been recorded by the RMB, this does not require a roll call.
Thank you. I think all the councils, this is similar to what they've done in years past and really great that this helps in the toy drive for the city. But also it gives a few people some amnesty on a ticket. I, you know, obviously we hope that people don't have those tickets, but if you do, it's a good way to get out of it. And it could be anywhere between thirty and a hundred and fifty dollar amnesty program. So not saying to take advantage of it, but and paying the ticket, give it to its good bill. All in favor? So what?
Calendar item number forty, communication for the mayor relative to free holiday parking.
Any councils on this?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept, motion approved, all in favor? Oh, go ahead, Council. Council, you good?
No, I'm good.
All in favor? So what? Council Novaselsky.
Mr. President, just public service announcement, if I may. I know we're all, it's that time of season that things are tough for everybody, all the kids. And everybody's looking for toys. I know we just mentioned that the toys for parking tickets. And there's the Marines are always looking for toys for their kids. I've been involved for many years for Easty Elves, which takes care of about a hundred and fifty kids in Revere. And along with East Boston and Winthrop. And we are looking for toys. We're looking for a place to put some boxes for two weeks from December first till December fifteenth. And then the gifts will be given out by Representative Lodaro in East Boston. It's his foundation that does it. And it was originally started even before Representative Petroselli. So if anybody out there has toys, just give me a call. I'll come pick them up. Or I'll find the box and put them in a place where they can bring them and let them know. So we appreciate all your help you can get for the hundred and fifty kids from Revere. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. And on that same note, as you all probably know, but to the viewing audience, they'll be doing the fifth annual Code for Kid Drive that has been sponsored by myself and a few others in the city, but it's really a collaborative effort from the entire city and getting warm winter wear to youth in our city that may need it. And because of some of the absence of some of the toy drives, we've also incorporated that into it as well to help with some students in the city that have been benefactors of a couple of different toy drives that have kind of gone away in the last few years. But, you know, this is the season, obviously, of giving and it's the season to try and do the right thing and you know, be a better person. So I just hope that people will help contribute and when where they can. And if they can't and they can volunteer time, they'll reach out to Ralph DeChico. And there's a lot of opportunities to volunteer within our city. There was one also item to mention tonight. During during the holiday week, Revere City Hall is closed through the main, through the remainder of the week. If there's any emergency business that need to be conducted, you can, you know, certainly email the departments that you may need. Or if you need any support in services, reach out to your local councils and we'll try to help. But the city hall will be reopened on Monday after after this week. Other than that, I hope the residents of Revere have a wonderful Thanksgiving and if you well. Motion to adjourn.